Good evening. Tonight is Wednesday, June 21st, 2023. This is the Monroe Township Board of Education Monthly Meeting. May we have a... Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Allen, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez, here. Ms. Belko?
Here.
Ms. Bierman?
Here.
Ms. Bora?
Here.
Ms. DePaine?
Here.
Ms. Fabiano?
Here.
Ms. Ratner?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Gerbi?
Here.
Mr. Tifano? Okay, you have a quorum. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published, an electronic notice provided by having the date, time, and place thereof posted June 16th, 2023, at all schools, on the district website, Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the municipality.
The next item is our closed session resolution. Being resolved, the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby goes into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subjects: harassment, intimidation, and bullying; matters protected by attorney-client privilege; confidential personnel matters; superintendent's evaluation. Following closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, absences? All right, just so you know, when we come out at 7:15 from closed session, we will be moving into the Performing Arts Center to do the next item on our agenda, which is our staff and student recognitions. Thank you. We are back in the public session of our Board of Education meeting. We previously opened the meeting in the media center and went into closed session, so we are now back in public session. We have our board members sitting up front here. We have Ms. Belko, Ms. Ratner, Ms. Bora, Mr. Tifano, Ms. Scott, Ms. Alvarez, Ms. Fabiano, and we have Ms. Bierman onstage with us. I'd like to introduce now, on the next item on our agenda, our presentations for staff and student recognition, our Superintendent, Mrs. Chandler.
Good evening, everyone. Now I realize why I very rarely use microphone. Good evening, and this is a fantastic evening. We are so excited to be able to acknowledge your children. This is about you, your family, and this community, and we are having a good problem. There's too many. That's a beautiful thing. We are so pleased that we have over 400 recipients this evening. So before we begin, by me announcing the principals to come forward, let's have a nice round of applause for our children. Oh, at the end, okay. I wanted to confirm, you know, you're only as good as the people that surround you and set you up for success. So I wanted to make sure we do have three retirees here this evening, and we will be acknowledging them as well, but I was just told we'll be doing that at the end. So at this time, without any further ado, we have Dr. Higgins from the middle school to announce his recipients. Thank you.
Good evening. We will begin the middle schools section with our TSA students. All of these students finished in the top three in the middle school division in New Jersey. TSA is Technology Student Association. So as I say your name, please come up and be recognized. Joseph Latona. Thomas Murphy. Arjun Kulkarni. I forgot to say, let's go this way and up. Om Balchandani. Ashi Chandarana. Anbitha Vamula. Kanva Kathoria. Abhinav Magante. Abhay Lingala. And Adarva Talapagata. Excellent job to the middle schoolers. At this time, it's my pleasure to call up Mr. David Reitner and Mr. Yell Snyder to hand out the Performing Arts Awards.
Thank you all so much. So our first nominees we're honoring are the CJMEA Elementary Honors Band students. All these students participated in a festival in April. They were nominated and selected and performed a variety of music in a single day. So we're going to lead off. As I call your name, we're going to walk up the stairs this way, shake everybody's hand. You'll receive your certificate right behind me. We'll start with Anya Kamon. With Vishi Harish Kumar. S. Konta Pali. Augustine Salazar. Esme Capelli. Ishan Patil. Sri Dakshita Akula. Emmanuel Rovetiel. Vedanti Kapare. Saycharan Kankala. Srihan Majapu. Akhil Venkatesh. Olivia Perdone. Don't give up now, you've got to keep those applause going. Meha Pai. Angelia Haji Soli. Mritunjay Sanangam Venkatesh. Krish Khatri. Samantha Ratner. Arnab Somasulya. And Morrigan Rukteshaw. We're going to continue our arts nomination acceptance and honoring with the NJAJE Region Jazz Ensemble. This was a little bit more of an involved process as these students auditioned for an ensemble and were selected amongst a variety of schools in central New Jersey. The three students from MTMS that were accepted into the Region Jazz Ensemble were Abhay Lingala, Jaskaran Kaler, and Manveth Sabatun. Our next ensemble, the CJMEA Region Intermediate Symphonic Band. Similar to the jazz ensemble, this is a group of symphonic band students who were auditioned for an ensemble and accepted into filling a spot, performing over a variety of months and performing a concert in March. And we're going to lead off with Aditi Achary. Sayesha Amareesh. Sidharth Chintapalli. Brody Chang. Hari Kumar Ganesh. Avani Gambrawala. Kavya Kakadhye. Jaskaran Kaler. Aman Patel. Ragav Rao. Sharvil Shinasasan. Nitesh Sundku. And Kian Vaishnav. In addition to the symphonic band, we also had students audition for the honor band and the wind ensemble. Our honor band recipient is Mr. Abhinav Sukla. And the top ensemble for the region in intermediate was the wind ensemble. We had these five students accepted into filling spots there. They are Arush Avalash. Kiki Lana. Eva Leong. Akansha Talapaneri. And Manveth Sabatun.
All right. Thank you so much and welcome. This is always one of our favorite nights of the year that we get to introduce our regions and honor band musicians. This year, our CJMEA Intermediate Percussion Ensemble had its 14th season. We were thrilled that Monroe Township had four students from the middle school. And between the percussion ensemble and the symphonic band and wind ensemble, we had the most percussion students accepted out of any school in Region II CJMEA. So we're very proud of that. And I would like to introduce our four students that were accepted into the CJMEA Intermediate Middle School Percussion Ensemble. First is Ambidi Muleham. Namana Arya. Gabrielle Siachi. And Pooja Sholka. Congratulations to all the students.
All right, I'm back. We are now going to provide honors for the CJMEA Region Intermediate Chorus. Similar to the band, these are students who auditioned and accepted into the performing with a group choir. We're going to lead off with Amaniya Arayju. Siri Bachu. Arnab Banso. Karman Chatawal. Aksaj Dharamaju. Ishta Gandhi. Jolie Garcia. Emily Galella. Aditi Honda. Janvi Irucheri. Sahana Kaduravan. Aliz Khan. Trinity Keith. Leshika Khanna. Davina Lohef. Kushal Putluri. Aishani Sahu. Ashlyn Seletti. Siddhak Setya. Divya Shri Kumar. Sanjana Subaramanian. Rahi Trivedi. And Caitlin Wong. Big round of applause for all of our Region Intermediate Choir acceptance. We're good, we're ready to go. I'm a little busy right now. Okay. All right, moving on to the honor choir. This is students who were accepted into the Region Honor Choir. We're going to hold the applause till the end so everybody gets one big thunderous applause. We're going to start with Javin Anthony. Avyak Konkamala. Leonardo LaForgia. Junray McCarthy. Rashab Navin. Matthew Palacio. Guillermo Perez Garcia. Ranit Paul. Nikita Paul. Shananya Rajkumar. Vihan Ramesh. Varsha Ramesh. Daruv Santosh. Aaron John Jacob. Jazzy Anthony. Schweta Chidaga. Arab Chandarana. Danielle Cugini. Sophia Esser. Vedanti Kapare. Anish Kartik. Ryan Kumar. Tanya Manwani. Ella Nafe. Ovia Prabhu. Samantha Ratner. Zachary Schnieweis. Sana Shayam. And Veda Sahashra Yayavaru. Big thunderous round of applause for our Region Honor Choir.
Our next award is for a young lady who scored very high in our Scripps Spelling Bee. So I'd like to ask up Sahashra Fyuru. Please come up. At this time, I would like to introduce the other Dr. Higgins. Dr. Kevin Higgins, Principal of the High School.
Good evening. Thank you. As we begin our portion of the night honoring our high school students, I just want to say congratulations and thank you for the dedication of all of our parents and our students to our clubs and activities and our sports. At this time, I would like to invite Ms. Laura Granite up to the stage, our advisor for youth and government.
The New Jersey Youth and Government Program is a state program that mimics the state government. There is a student governor. There are cabinet positions for each of the regular cabinet positions you have. There's an assembly, there's a senate, there's a Supreme Court, there's the press corps. We have crisis situations that come up and teams that handle that. The students write bills that they wish were New Jersey state law. They have to write it in the exact procedure that the bills need to be written. They then learn the proper parley pro method of speaking, debate to get it voted out of their committees. Then it has to pass both the assembly and the senate. It has to go to the governor, who can veto it or sign it into law. This legislative program debates cases that go to the New Jersey Supreme Court. They write legal briefs, and it is covered with the press corps. Plus, we have a team that handles crises that come up that our governor would have to handle. Our delegation was awarded Outstanding Delegation for 2023, and I've advised this program since 2019. Monroe Township has been awarded either Premier or Outstanding Delegation every single year. The following students this year had individual recognition. Raina Patel was elected as the Lieutenant Governor for the state from 2023. She received the Outstanding Officer Award and has been nominated to the Council on National Affairs, which is the national program. Ashika Chintapathi was elected as a state program officer as well this year. She was in the Governor's Cabinet for Health and Human Services, and she was elected as an alternate delegate for the Council on National Affairs. Zain Jabir was elected as a program officer in 2023 and has been elected to have the same position in 2024 as the Livingston Senate Chair, and she was elected as a delegate to the Council on National Affairs. Azmita Adari was elected as a program officer for 2023 as the Livingston Senate Chair. Ria Kakar was elected as a state program officer in 2023 for the Wilson Human Services Legislative Committee Chair. She was also selected as an alternate delegate for the Council on National Affairs. Anoki Patel was elected as a state program officer for 2024. Monroe will once again have the Lieutenant Governor from our delegation. Ragav Gupta. He is the Chief Justice for the Supreme Court for 2024, so he achieved that. Ashwarya Sadashi was elected as a program officer for 2024 for the Wilson Assembly Chair. Kausar Shaikh was elected her first year. She received Outstanding First Year Delegate, Outstanding Legislative Statesperson, and was selected as an alternate to the National Council on National Affairs. Sanvi Verapaneri was elected or achieved Outstanding Written Delegation. Ashwarya Billikarthi also achieved Outstanding Written Delegation Legislation. Philip Shiyavon was, in his first year, Outstanding First Year Delegate. Matthew Basalee, it was also his first year, and he achieved becoming a delegate to the National Council on National Affairs. Hetve Thanker worked on the Crisis Co-op Team for Problems That Arrived, and she was a finalist. And Thirika Mataradi was selected as an alternate delegate to the Council on National Affairs. I also want to point out, through this program, our delegates get to meet people who are in not only the New Jersey government, but on the federal level as well. And two of our delegates were personally invited to meet Vice President Kamala Harris just the other month. So it's an incredible program.
All right, last time. One of our students from the Elementary Honors Band nominations was neglected from the slide, so I'd like to call up and honor Umanand Kaler.
At this time, I would like to invite to the stage the advisor for our Latin Honor Society, Dr. Michael Merson.
Good evening. It's a great pleasure and honor for me to join this ceremony and acknowledge the success of our students in numerous academic competitions. Members of the Latin Honor Society and students of the Latin program participated this year in four national and international exams provided by American Philological Association and American Classical League. Our Latin I and Latin II teams participated in the New Jersey State Classics Competition at Princeton University, where they scored second and third places accordingly. Most recently, at the State Junior Classical League Convention, we received multiple awards for artistic projects. And now, concluding the year, I'm very proud to announce 41 individual academic awards in addition to 30 gold medals, which were already recognized at the April Ceremony. I'd like to thank everyone in our district who helped us to get them, and I wish the winners to continue next year on the same victorious path. So, bronze medals for national Latin exams administered in 15 countries all over the world. Itten Rigo. Abinav Tanigai. Wes Vias. Benisha Patanai. Bronze Medal at National Classical Etymology Exam. Charvika Gopi. Bronze Medal at National Roman Civilization Exam. Aparna Ela Idom. Avani Hatch. Ruben Sequera. Bronze Medal at National Miduzo Etymology Exam. Tamia Hyman. Sanvi Verapaneni. Silver Medals. Silver Medal at National Latin Exam. Justin Goetz. Akash Talurin. Anant Surjinarayanan. Ashna Srivastava. Surya Raj. Lokianarney. Silver Medal at National Classical Etymology Exam. Dakshil Saini. Anya Thakkar. Silver Medal at National Roman Civilization Exam. Arya Ravall. Kum Lauda Certificate with praise. National Latin Exam. Van Shsunan. Marcus Asketino. Jana Romeo. Yusuf Abdeljabat. Christian Fama. Kum Lauda Certificate in National Miduzo Etymology Exam. Ashika Chintapathi. And Shashan Kappa. Now, gold medal for National Miduzo Etymology Exam, and I would like to mention particularly, Anish Karapati won four gold medals on all national exams this year. And now, recipients of multiple awards. I would like to mention that we have more that, as I said before, 30 gold medals were given before in April. So this is what not mentioned and given before. Nikhil Tumala won Gold Medal National Miduzo Etymology Exam, Silver Medal at National Roman Civilization Exam, and Silver Medal at National Latin Exam. Anushka Kumano. Gold Medal National Miduzo Etymology Exam, Silver Medal National Classical Etymology Exam. Silver Medal National Classical Etymology Exam, Silver Medal National Latin Exam, and Bronze Medal National Roman Civilization Exam. Abinav Samavinkata. National Miduzemetology Exam Silver Medal and Kum Lauda Certificate in National Latin Exam. Talking about three students, I would like to explain this year, three members of the Latin Honor Society were elected as officers on the board of Junior Classical League. So in addition to Silver Medal on National Latin Exam, Anya Prabhu was elected as Correspondence Scriba Junior Classical League. Kelce Barclay, in addition to Silver Medal National Classical Etymology Exam, she is co-editor of Newsletter Nuntius together with Amber Ollan, who is co-editor of Newsletter Nuntius, and also won Bronze Medal in National Miduzemetology Exam, National Roman Civilization Exam, and Silver Medal on National Latin Exam. Congratulations to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you for our next two categories. I would like to invite up Mr. Giuseppe Kalella, one of our vice principals at the high school and the coordinator of all of our co-curricular activities at the high school for the next two categories.
Hi, everyone. Mr. Romano and Mr. Thumb are unable to join us tonight, but these particular students won awards at the Health Occupation Student Association Regional Competition. First, we have a group of four. We have Sania Towari, Srihassa Muppa, and Nasmita Tambi and Maya Vij. These, this team won fifth place in creative problem solving. Next, Turan Shiram won eighth place in dental terminology. Betta Sangay won fourth place in behavioral health. And Sia Mathar won fourth place in medical spelling. Finally, we have Remy Briglin, who won third place for medical spelling, second place for medical spelling. I'm sorry, third place medical spelling, second place for... What? That doesn't make any sense. Oh, sorry, it was the regional and the state, my apologies. And she was also invited to the ILC International Leadership Conference in Dallas, Texas later this month. So let's hear it for these students. That's it. So next, we're going to present just some recognition for our Environmental Action Club. Now, the Environmental Action Club has worked really hard with improving the building and being more environmentally conscious. You might have noticed water filling stations throughout the school. It's really, you know, these guys really helped spearhead that. Their next project is the greenhouse. We have a greenhouse up on the third floor, and they just were able to get a $2,000 grant from Sustainable New Jersey to help restore the greenhouse. These students are Jada Schwarm, Vidica Singh, Yasmin Thomas, and Sania Desai. Thanks very much, guys. Awesome job. At this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Marina Vitale, MTHS Business Teacher.
Good evening. When most people think of entrepreneurship, they think small business management. That is not at all how we define and conceive of entrepreneurship here at MTHS. Here, we refer to it as solving consequential world problems, big picture value creation, bold thinking and bold action-taking. Most of us in this audience have had a great idea or two for an innovation that we considered for a hot minute and dismissed with "I would if I could", while the emerging entrepreneurs that I am about to recognize and celebrate today live by the maxim of "I can and I will", and as is the cause of one of our honorees teams, "I could and I did". The first group of honorees, Team Safeguard, earned a third-place win at the NASA Technology Transfer Design Challenge. They were given three very complex NASA technologies available for spinoffs, commercially-used applications. They were then given one week, one week, to understand and research these complex technologies, come up with the consequential problems that these technologies could solve, develop a product and a business model, and prepare a presentation to pitch before a panel of judges made up of NASA officials and venture capitalists. All this while in the midst of AP exams. Team Safeguard wowed judges by using two of the three available technologies in a standout public safety project. Please welcome Aditya Jain, Simone Meda, Riva Parikarti, Vanj Sonan, and Harrison Woak. Remember these names. I promise you, this is not the last time that you will hear them. Next, I am delighted to introduce Team Study Hungry. Sharia Sharma, Drew Shetty, and Eric Wong of Team Study Hungry, designed, developed, and launched an app with the goal of helping students to beat procrastination and develop healthy study habits. It is this bold vision and its execution that earned them high praise from the judges and the first-place prize in the Steam Tank Challenge, a joint entrepreneurship and innovation competition run by the New Jersey School Boards Association and the US Army. Study Hungry and the resulting first-place win in the Jedi category as well are the pinnacle of two years of work by this team. Please join me in congratulating them on this incredible achievement.
At this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Larissa Miller. She's one of our video production teachers here at the school. She also co-advises Lights, Camera, Action along with Mr. Boris Lattick.
So Middlesex County runs a contest every year called the Don't Drive Dangerously PSA Contest, and it's open to every school in Middlesex County, public and private. So our club, Lights, Camera, Action, the students in the club produced, they wrote and produced a public service announcement to draw attention to distracted driving, and they won third place in the competition. And those students are Aiden Nekesi, Jordy Castañeda Delone, Shuvi Canal, Olivia Lisi. Give them a chance to come down here. They're all in the same row up there. Rudra Alavi, Sanvi Tati, Celeste Cruz, Garrett Cohen, Zachary Fernal, Janan Vawa, Brandon Walenty, Nikita Yandapali, and Iman Adam. Great job, guys.
At this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Beneatha Goshanker and Ms. Megan Cobb. They're going to be presenting awards for our robotics club and our tech club.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to start off by talking about our Team 96138A, Flying Falcons. The team participated in multiple regional-level VEX robotics competitions and got invited to the NJ State Championships and the VEX Worlds in Dallas, Texas. A one-of-a-kind experience as the students worked countless hours to design, build, test, and improve the robot to compete at the highest level. I'd like to take, it's my great honor to invite Team A, 96138A, Flying Falcons, Aaron Aggicoli, Aditya Alavan, Anand Surianarayanan, Anshul Chandalia, Eric Avesbakhiev, Krish Karbanda, Mridin Balaji, Pranav Nayar, Surut Thunga, Vishal Sendalkumar, and Vyashwant Mupiri. I would also like to call upon Team 96138B, Monroe Meccas. Competing for the first time, this team made it to their maiden NJ State Championship, learning through the process of teamwork, collaboration, communication, and working through failures and fighting out a way to make it work. I call upon Timothy Alex, Josh Algalley, Rohan Majigappu, Arnav Netula, Nikunj Patel, Manvi Sina, Shivatsan Shinivas, Jared Thai, Praneel Mukamala, and Shreya Spabu.
All right, so we're going to be moving on to the technology club now. We're going to be starting with our Chapter Con winners, which this was a STEM-based competition that took place at Biotechnology High School back in February, and it was a way to get our students prepared for the New Jersey TSA State Competition. Three teams from our TSA club participated, and we had our freshman team, were the ones that came in first place. So those students are Kevin Padma, Adarsh Chandra Mulaswari, Swarin, sorry, Anish Padma, and Ananya Akkana Batu. All right, so next was our state competition. So we had a bunch of national qualifiers. The first was in our Engineering Design category, where they created a solution for a theme called Prevent Nuclear Threat. And they placed third, which qualified them for Nationals, which will be taking place the last week of June in Louisville, Kentucky. So those students are Akshar Karthik, Samhida Matapali, Aditya Koshik, Ayush Gandhi, Ananya Akkam Batu, and Kauschel Akarla. Our next category they competed in was video game design. They placed fifth. They had to create a game that was educational, but also fun for children to play. So they placed fifth, which still qualified them for Nationals. Those students are Drew Paduru, Sean DeMello, Hayden Wu, and Jason Henry. And then finally, our VEX Robotics team also competed at our New Jersey TSA competition. And those two students are Anand Surianarayanan and Eric Avesbakhiev. All right, so next is our Rocketry Challenge Competition. This is the first time that our high school was competing in it, and it was through our TSA chapter here at the high school. They were invited for a fly-off, which was the national competition, which happened in Virginia mid-May, on May 20th. And they were a team out of the top 100 within the whole country that competed, and they placed very well. Those students are Jinchi Wong, Loket Sanjay Babu Narayanan, Akilan Chandra Kumar, Allison Yeves, Harakrishna Ganeshbandi, Aaron Akwili, Anish Padma, Kevin Padma, and Jay Patel.
At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Martin Griffin, one of our band teachers here at the high school.
Good evening. Our high school wind ensemble had a banner year, performed in Carnegie Hall in New York for the first time in our school's history with a gold rating to boot at that event. That was followed up by a second gold rating at the Region Two Concert Band Festival here at Monroe Township High School. And their third accomplishment this year was being invited to the State Gala Band Concert, which was held in April at Rowan University as one of the top six concert bands in New Jersey for 2023. I am not going to read fifty names, so I'm going to ask any Wind Ensemble students to please come forward and be recognized. Come on down.
I forgot Mr. Sean Nagpal. One of our other band teachers is also here, so I wanted to just make sure that, you know, he's acknowledged as well.
Our next group we want to recognize is the Honors Percussion Ensemble, who this year were crowned the WGI Winter Guard International Power East Regional Percussion Concert Champions, also for the first time in our school's history. So we're going to call them up on the stage. Rayhan Bora, Eric Crowley, Megan DeSouza, Amar Dillon, Aiden Lin, Jaden Liu, Preston Masigla, Arav Narwal, Michael Pruster, Vikram Ranganath, Marcelo Sabat, Tanvi Shah, Sai Takale. Congratulations. Gotcha. Okay. High school band students who were involved with region and all-state groups. Our first names are students who were in the Region Two Symphonic Band in 2023. Chloe Ramirez, Anna Yanachi, Preston Masigla, Arav Narwal, and Marcelo Sabat. All-State Symphonic Band students for this year. Michael Pruster, Jaden Liu, Marcelo Sabat, Preston Masigla, Aiden Lin, Jaden Liu. We had one student recognized for Region Jazz Band this year, that's Arav Narwal. And in Region Orchestra, Noel Chong. Our high school region percussion ensemble this year, we had a record number of Monroe students in the ensemble. We are so proud of them. They had their concert back in January, right here on this stage. They were conducted by a professor from the Juilliard Pre-College, and it was just a wonderful experience, and we are so proud of them for making this ensemble, the High School CJMEA Region Percussion Ensemble. Eric Crowley, Jaden Liu, Preston Masigla, Arav Narwal, Marcelo Sabat, Michael Pruster, and Sai Takale. Congratulations to all our Region and All-State Orchestra Band Jazz Percussion students.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Zach Maralta, and I am the district supervisor for Fine Performing Arts Careers Technology for now. On behalf of Ms. Reinhardt and Mr. Josh Uncompato and our high school choral program, I would like to recognize and honor our vocalists and choral musicians here at the high school that had, once again, unprecedented year at the CJMEA Regional and State Level. We have a lot of names here, so I'm just gonna rapid-fire, and if you are present tonight, you could come on up, and we'll sort through your certificates. First, CJMEA Region Chorus. Emily Cugini, Ivana Samuel, Sanvi Tati, Serena Valentine, Vincent Wilson, Trishiti Mishrandani, Rochelle Oliviotis, Shanaya Tewari, Shifa Setya, Dia Singh, Navya Anush, Akshar Vandansam, Jordan Visaki, Rachel Rodriguez, Orvi Mulai, Kennedy Christiansen, Marcus Peña, Brianna Siachi, Roja Sonakar, Pernisha Gorti, Mira James, Philip Regalado, Gurjab Kohli, Aishi Goswami, and Sanve Shringare. 2023 CJMEA Region Chorus. The next group of individuals were selected to the next level, which is the NJMEA All-State Chorus. Navya Anush, Sanvi Shingari, Shanaya Tewari, Rachel Rodriguez, Kushi Honda, Mehar Aiden, Maya Govindu, Roja Sonakar, Brianna Siachi, Afshin Mohammed, Philip Regalado, Mira James, Akshar Vandansam, Jordan Visaki, Mulai Mulai, and, I'm sorry, Orvi Mulai, I presume, and Kennedy Christiansen. Congratulations to all of our vocal musicians. We will now turn over to the athletic recognition, and I will call again Dr. Jim Higgins.
Those of you who currently are or have your children in the middle school, or those of you who do not, know that we are not just about the academics. We are about creating whole, complex students, whether it's their participation in the arts, their participation in clubs and after-school programs, or even athletics. So my next batch of awards will be for athletics. Mr. Zims, our head coach of the boys' volleyball team, has asked me to present the certificates for his undefeated boys' volleyball team. So if you are, if you are here from the middle school volleyball team, please come up, I will read off the names. Patrick Mullin, Noah Peters, Ragav Rao, Manu Churetti, Sachim Gog, Akul Gunda, Christian Malala, Tarunara, Ansh Patel, Ishan Patel, Sai Paluri, Elijah Irata, Harsha Bagarajji, Smaran Konkel, and Luke Kasuna. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Good job, guys.
Our next team, being an ex-cross-country runner, I know this may be the hardest team because our sport is your sport's punishment. So the boys' cross-country team was undefeated. Head coach, Mr. Gary Snyder, asked me to present the certificates to the 2023 Boys' Cross Country Undefeated Team for MTMS. So if you are on the cross-country team, coming up, and I will read the names. Vir Agawal, Vedante Bangad, Aryan Bat, Kyle Capadano, Vishal Shereeri, Siddharth Sinthapalli, Aditya Sinthapalli, Advait Kunnatar, Aditya Ginigar, Ethan Hunter. I know you're out there, come on up. Zen Jane, Byron James, Cameron Capus, Kenav Kutheria, Akem Kokere, Rithvik Lakala, Sandvik Lakala, Justin Lau, Bhuvan Macha, Jitvan Madhaniel, Robbie McGuire, Anish Moskar, Christian Montero, Aditya Marali, Vishwa Amkar. Oh, see, I knew they were here. Sohan Patel, Akshaya Pantala, Dylan Polachuk, Pratham Rao, Arjun Reddy, William Rembisch, Druv Santosh, Shrikashadi, Robert Schaffter, Shifam Shah, and Abhinav Sukla. Just to keep Mr. Maralta hopping, we're gonna go move on to the girls' cross-country team, again coached by Mr. Gary Snyder. Our girls' cross-country team was undefeated for the school year 2023. We cannot be prouder of all of our athletes, and anybody on the girls' cross-country team, come on up, and I'm gonna get through your names. Zainab Alam, Sanvi Bella, Olivia Cannon Sanchez, Nina Corbusiero, Sahiba Deng, Amelia Davis, Smarini Dugirala, Valentina Juskiewicz, Emily Gordon, Sophia Guzikowsky, Seher Hararamani, Anshul Kari, Aditya Connor, Kitty Quan, Shruti Mahapatra, Anne Marie Malak, Isha Mahan, Amara Mahindru, Aditya Makund, Brooke Nealon, Fiddy Pareek, Ria Patel, Samia Patel, Natalie Pitti, Anya Prisana, Lola Regeney, Alexandra Sucktavel, Tavisha Sana, Shloka Shah, Meg Asika, Isha Tirinugari, Olivia Tamarko, Tashida Vimuri, Alina Sahidani. So our next two awards are for individual students through wrestling, so I will call them up one at a time. The first student I know well, he is one of my favorite eighth graders. I look forward to seeing him in the high school. He's gonna be great, and he will be missed. So this student was the GMC Large School Champion, overall GMC Champion, Middlesex versus Monmouth Champion, tri-county runner-up, and does a great job on my fish tank when he's looking for something to do. Luke Palchak, please come up. Our next wrestler, also equally accomplished and will be equally dismissed and equally do great in high school. GMC Large School Champion, overall GMC Champion, Middlesex versus Monmouth Champion, tri-county runner-up, Mr. Kyle Capadano.
Good job. I got out of order. Okay, so we would like to call up the most outstanding player for all of our teams. So I will speak a little less New York and a little more slowly. So Rishi Patel for boy soccer. This is outstanding player. When you hear your name, come on up. Avery Grossman, girl soccer. Sophia Verios, field hockey. Ansh Patel, boys volleyball. Dara Patel, girls volleyball. Amelia Davis, girls cross-country. Ethan Hunter, boys cross-country. Kyle Capadano, wrestling. Logan Richter, boys basketball. Mia Marabuto, girls basketball. Benjamin Fagan, baseball. Brianna Bukausik, softball. Gianna Sinigila, girls track. And Rohit Challa, boys track. Our next set of awards, again, speaks to our trying to develop well-rounded students. So the next three will speak to that, and our first one is a young lady who excels not only in her sport but also in academics. So for MTMS, outstanding student athlete, Brianna Bukausik. Okay. This young man also excels in his academics, excels in his athletics. Adeturan Arigbe. Part of being well-rounded is losing gracefully and winning gracefully, and being a sportsman at all times, and this student embodies that, so I would like to call up Ryan Techox. Okay, I'm gonna hand it over to Dr. Higgins from the high school.
Thank you. It is my honor to present our individual athletic awards for Monroe Township High School, starting with, on behalf of Coach Lee, our award winners for MTHS football. Second-team All-Division Varun Magadam and Tajman Singh. First-team All-Division Aiden Lane, Chris Jobs, and Sal Marcioni. For boys and girls cross-country, both teams for the first time in high school history winning the GMC Championships respectively. We have award winners tonight. All GMC Red Division Champion, GMC Champion, and racing in state sectionals, group championships, and the meet of champions, Amelia Arts. All GMC Team, first place in freshman state race, Ananya Rajah. And our All GMC Team, Kristen Giridano. For our girls' volleyball, on behalf of Coach Steck, All GMC Team, All Red Division, Alyssa Grau. And All GMC Team, All Red Division, Allison Neves. For boys soccer, on behalf of Coach McKenzie, we have, under our All GMC Team and All Red Division, Jaden Liu and Nate Lipton. All Red Division, Diego Galindo and Justin Graham. For girls soccer, on behalf of Coach For girls soccer, on behalf of Coach Jessup, we have All GMC Team and All Red Division, Lauren Pascal and Jennifer Ward. All Red Division, Paige Akins. For field hockey, on behalf of Coach Hillman, we have three athletes, all our All GMC Team, All Red Division, Marissa Schramm, Isabella Heiser, Priyanka Yedala. For ice hockey, on behalf of Coach Felice, we have All GMC Honorable Mention Vincent Amabile. All GMC First Team, Aiden Getz. All GMC First Team, Public A-13, and scored 100 career points, Dylan Batko. All GMC First Team, 1,000 Save Club, school record with shutouts and wins, William Burkshot. All GMC Honorable Mention, 100 career points, Nick Izzo. For wrestling, for wrestling, on behalf of Coach Yurel, we have District Champions, Nick Cavalo and Omar Chalula. And we have third place in the conference tournament, Wyatt Olma. For girls basketball, on behalf of Coach Voughtman, we have All GMC Team, All Red Division, Haley Cottrell. All Red Division, Katie Loro, second team. All Red Division, Haley Higgins, second team. For swimming, on behalf of Coach Rickert, we have All-Conference All-White Division, Alyssa Stump and Ashley Gswami. All-White Division, Jordan Bennett, I'm sorry, Jordan Barnett and Genevieve Warner. All-Conference All-White Division, Brandon Anand. All-White Division, Evan Warner and Neil Chadwani. For bowling, on behalf of Coach Isola, we have All GMC Team and All Red Division, Priyanka Yedala. For boys winter track, on behalf of Coach Straneri, we have All-Division, All-Red Division, Matt Lucas, Mom Patel, Jaden Ennis, Si Nakka. All GMC Conference, Mom Patel and Jaden Ennis. For girls winter track, on behalf of Coach Jessup, we have All-Red Division, Amelia Arts, Kristin Giordano, Kayla Intorsia, and Denise Pena. Also All GMC Conference, Amelia Arts and Kristin Giordano. Softball, on behalf of Coach Karen, we have All-Division Samantha Gonchar and All-Division Ava Kwikowski. For boys volleyball, on behalf of Coach Steck, we have All-Division Gautam Cotha and All-Division All-Conference Tej Valega and Jaden Liu. For girls lacrosse, on behalf of Coach Marshall, we have All GMC Team, All-Red Division, Ria Salum, Elizabeth Roswell, Nicole Turco, and Julia Giacunto. For boys lacrosse, on behalf of Coach Inoni, All GMC All-Red Division, Chris Jobs and Billy Burkshot. All-Red Division, Erjon Kosaj. All-Red Division Second Team, Jordan Sert. And our All-American GMC Player of the Year and All-Red Division, Christian Updale. And Student of the Month Parking Spot, Christian Updale. For our undefeated golf team, first time in school history, All-Red Division, Tanisha Bora, Jack Manfree, Krishna Anand. For boys tennis, on behalf of Coach Ouzuski, we have All-Conference All-Red Division and the GMC First Singles Champion, Gaurjat Singh. For boys track, on behalf of Coach Rickert, we have All-Conference Jaden Ennis, All-Conference All-Red Division, Mom Patel. And for girls track, on behalf of Coach Jessup, All-Conference All-Red Division, Amelia Arts. For baseball, on behalf of Coach Field, All-Red Division, Lucas White, All-Conference All-Red Division, Harrison Lallem. And our national champion, New Jersey CDCA State Championships, All-Music Mega Group Champions, Group Four Champions, Americhair Internationals in Orlando, Florida, our Monroe Township High School Competition Cheerleading Team. Anyone from the cheerleading team, come up, and I will read off names, like Dr. Higgins reads it off in the middle school. Alexa Tanzer, Jenna Lugo, Madison Chervinyak, Natalie Primavera, Isabella Tufano, Fallon Massey, Lauren Custodio, Juliana Scooty, Rachel Sichetti, Lacey Ricardi, Daniella Mayo, Danielle Przbiski, sorry, I'm sorry, and Brianna Przbiski, sorry. Gabriela Petralia, Megan Lawson Levy, Paige Fornal, Sophia Brennan, Ashley Rund, Isabella Grepa, and Delilah Updale. Sabrina, I'm sorry, Sabrina Cipuleta, Sabrina Cipuleta, my apologies that she's not on there. We have athletic special awards. These are overall awards for the entire seasons, for the year. We have our GMC Sportsmanship Award, Ayambora and Elizabeth Oresto. Our National Girls and Women in Sports NJSIAA Representative, Grayson Regan. Our GMC Scholar-Athlete Winner, Kristin Giordano. Our NJSIAA Scholar-Athlete Winner, Emily Bai. And our GMC Scholar-Athlete Winner, Jaden Liu. Again, Jaden Liu. And it is my pleasure to introduce our staff achievements this year. We had a lot of them. Our coaches and our advisors worked very hard with their students every day after school, and they've been recognized for individual achievements. Selected as Committee Member, Counsel on Nance National Affairs, Laura Granite. Our Boys Cross-Country Coach of the Year, Nicholas Paleyo. Our Girls Cross-Country Coach of the Year, Mary Howroyd, sorry, Howroyd, I apologize. Our GMC and Red Division Coach of the Year for girls basketball, girls soccer, Christian Jessup. Our Ice Hockey Coach of the Year, Kevin Felice. Our Project Lead The Way National Outstanding Teacher, Ms. Garishankar. Vanita Garishankar. Our Wrestling Coach, Mr. Joe Yurel, achieved 100 career wins this year. And our Assistant Wrestling Coach, Chris Musie, was awarded with the District Assistant Coach of the Year for GMC. With that, we have a special recognition, and it is my honor to introduce the President of our Board of Education, Ms. Chrissy Skirby.
Good evening. The true meaning of community comes when you see individuals give so much of their time to get involved simply because they love Monroe and want to see our students succeed. Tonight I have the honor to stand here and present plaques to two individuals that have become a welcome part of our athletics program here in Monroe as volunteers. I will start with Mr. Roy DeBurr. When my oldest was a freshman in high school on the baseball team, I was given a link to a website called SmugMug to access all photos from the games. I thought, wow, this is so great, our school does this. I attended the end-of-the-season banquet that year and saw these beautiful collages created for our seniors. I asked where they got them, and I got one word, Roy. I was like, oh, wow, he must work here in the school. In talking to more and more sports parents, I discovered that Roy did not work for our school, he volunteered for our school. For the next six years that I have been in the high school as a parent of two athletes across multiple sports, I cannot tell you how many times I have heard the great, how great SmugMug website is. Parents and athletes are so thankful to have someone so incredible that gives his time to give back to our school community through his work. He leaves our student athletes a keepsake for a lifetime to remember. Roy, many parents do not know you are a volunteer here in our school, they think you work here. And on behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to extend our sincere thanks to you for everything you continue to do for our students. Next, Mrs. Sue Knotts is hardly ever seen without her camera on our sports field. When COVID shut down the world, I was contacted by Sue because she wanted to make sports posters for the class of 2020 senior athletes and wanted to use a picture that I had. While she had been photographing and creating these posters for years, I had not known her before then. From 2020 through today, I have witnessed the selfless volunteering of Sue. Like Roy, she photographs our athletes and goes above and beyond making posters for our seniors and game day social media ads. I know the soccer program is near and dear to her heart, and she is basically part of the girls' and boys' soccer team. There is not a game that Sue misses, and her pride she has for our school is second to none. As a field hockey parent, I reached out to Sue this year and felt terrible asking, but we needed senior night posters. Sue was right on it. She did it and was genuinely excited to. That is who she is. Sue and I had a conversation this year that I want to share briefly. I thanked her for all her help making the girls' field hockey senior night posters such a success with the posters, and she said to me, this is her way of paying back what was done for her. She was an athlete, I'm sorry, she was an athlete when she was in school and told me that she remembers all of those who volunteered for her, and this is her way of paying it forward. It was that moment that I realized that not only is our school program lucky to have Sue, but our entire town is lucky to have someone like her who cares so much. Sue played soccer in England where she grew up, and then when she moved to the U.S., she played for the East Brunswick High School as a Bear. Sue does not miss any games between Monroe and East Brunswick because she always wants to see the Falcons beat the Bears. Sue, on behalf of the Monroe Township Board of Education, thank you for all you do for our school, our athletes, and for Monroe. Your volunteerism is appreciated, and I know our athletes will never forget you and your kindness. Thank you. Next, I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Chanley.
As tonight was a celebration of all of our children, we also had the opportunity to celebrate our staff. Some staff members have been mentioned for their outstanding achievements and awards and accolades. I have here before me three individuals whose outstanding award and accolade has been in what they have done as teachers. So at this time, I'd like to acknowledge the three retirees that we would like to come up upon stage so that we can give them their proper acknowledgement. Our first retiree is Ms. Erica Friedman. In her position as a Transition Specialist for Monroe Township High School, she has worked diligently with our children regarding placement, regarding having an understanding of what it means to go from school to the world, to the workplace, to other schools, and nobody would have benefited without her. I want to say wishing her all the best. Next, we have a teacher also from the high school who has devoted herself to being creative. And as a person who was a teacher of art, her creativity has allowed many of our children many of our children to explore their own creativity. We thank her for her service, and we wish her well in her next journey, Ms. Patricia Rain. And our last recipient of our acknowledgement for retiring. Are we acknowledging him for retiring? No, we're acknowledging him for his years and years of working with our children. This one is a little special and very placed in my heart because he started out at Woodland, but he left as a middle school Falcon. So we'd like to acknowledge and wish well to Mr. Matthew Gorham for all that he's done for our children. Make sure you fly all the way. That's it. So I want to thank everyone who remained to the very end, and, and thank you for those that will be watching this on video. It is the best night of the year when you get to celebrate the children. Thank you for coming, and we will resume our Board of Education meeting in the library momentarily. Thank you again, and have a good evening.
All right, great. We are back here in the media center. We will continue on with our agenda. Our next item on the agenda is our approval of our minutes. We have the minutes from the closed session meeting, April 26, 2023. These are the redacted minutes. Can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or recusals?
Um, abstention and recusal for the parts pertaining to conflicted issues.
Okay, thank you, so noted. The next minutes are the closed session minutes, the redacted, from May 10, 2023. Can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any redact, uh, abstentions or recusals?
Abstention and recusal on parts pertaining to negotiations.
Abstention for the same.
Okay, so noted. Okay, so that's three abstentions. Four, yes. Ms. Allen, you have that? Okay. The next minutes are the public minutes from the April 26, 2023 meeting. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions or recusals? Nope, okay. The next minutes are from the public meeting of May 10, 2023. Can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, anybody have any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any recusal or abstentions? No, okay. The next item on our agenda is our Student Board Members Report. We have our, um, Student Board Member here tonight, Mr. Ladapauli.
Over at Woodland, over at Woodland, the Woodland 5th Grade students had a great opportunity to attend Junior Achievement Biztown, which was in Edison, New Jersey for their class trip. This was a learning event for students to assimilate real life experiences, and they operated banks, managed restaurants, wrote checks, and also voted for their mayor. In celebration of the school year coming to an end, our students and staff all participated in the Field Day. Mr. Schultz, a physical education teacher, coordinated a fun-filled day with many different physical education activities, showing their class pride. The Woodland Mill Lake and PTO graciously provided the school with a BMX assembly. These athletes performed stunts both on the ground and, well, in the air, and it also incorporated inspirational, anti-bully, and inclusive messages for all their students. The band and chorus concert, the band and chorus students did an incredible job performing their spring concert on June 14. Heading over to Applegard on Thursday, June 1st, the Applegard Spring Concert was held. Students in band and chorus performed beautiful selections for the packed audience, a testament to their dedication to zero period and their independent practices, as well as the lessons they received from their exceptional staff over at Applegard. In June, Applegard students were given the opportunity to complete a rigorous process to become a starfish of a character. In keeping with their character education initiatives, uh, students completed a criteria-based multimedia presentation, and that was outlining why they should have been chosen as student of character. Students also needed to get recommendations from within the community to support their candidacy, and the selection committee scored many applicants, and ultimately, eight Applegard students were chosen, and these were the likes of Avia Daga from Ms. Farquhar Smith Qumby's class, Kevin Titura from Mr. Gardner's class, Anika Patel, also from Mr. Gardner's class, Aria Vaida from Ms. Shepherd's class, and Reya, Reyes Nador from Ms. Gigueto's class, Sana Desai from Ms. Potter's class, Safiya Kadar from Ms. Lazio's class, and Varun Paulingri from Mr. Mazza's and Mr. Fisher's class. And a ceremony was held on June 13 to honor the students as well as their families. Heading over to Barkley Brook, they would like to thank Rehan Bora, a former Barkley Brook student who completed his Eagle Scout project and created a story walk behind the Barkley Brook School Playground. This permanent structure will allow them to showcase different books throughout the years for students to enjoy. And once again, thank you, Rehan. Um, Barkley Brook students thoroughly enjoyed their Field Day at the end of May. We would like to thank, or they would like to thank dozens of parent volunteers who helped them to, who helped to make the day such a success. And they have also been busy with the year and celebrations, including their pre-K end of the year show, their kindergarten end of the year show, the Grade One Virtual Field Trip, as well as their Second Grade Core Memory Day. And it has been such a joy celebrating the accomplishments of all their students at this time of the year, of course. Over at Mill Lake, Mill Lake School has been on steroids these past few weeks as we send off our third grades on a new adventure to Woodland School and usher in our new kindergarten class. In early tune, Mill Lake melded with their incoming kindergarten class and new Mill Lake students to support a smooth transition. Our third graders took a short bus ride over to their new school, met teachers, as well as they sampled the food like true rising fourth graders. And on the last full day of school, we ushered our third grade students to do a parent-school clapout. And looking forward to next year, they have a few unique programs that they're bringing to Mill Lake. During the last week of summer, they're going to be piloting at a summer boot camp for rising Grade Two students, a Health Body/Health Mind Walking Club, and a Before School Reading Program that focuses on building background knowledge as well as student exposure. And a big shout out to Ms. Christine Christie, who has assisted us in designing these new programs, and of course, have an amazing summer Mill Lake and Monroe Township School District. To keep it brief, at MTMS, June 9, MTMS participated in the Annual Torch Run. June 16, they held their 8th Grade Dance Formal, and almost 550 students attended. June 20, they, uh, held their 8th Grade Aware of Award Ceremonies, and tomorrow, June 22nd, Thursday, they're going to be holding their 8th Grade Moving Up Ceremony. And at Oak Tree, Annual Health Living Night took place on May 18. Fun-filled events that centered on positive choices for the mind and body, and the Dunk Tank was a highlight for sure. June 2, they had a Field Day in which all of Oak Tree students participated in a myriad of events. At Brookside, they had a spring concert, which was back last month, the end of it, May 31st. The students put on a phenomenal performance. Brookside Day was June 2nd, Brookside Day was also a huge success. The state, the day started with the, uh, students working with other students from different grade, grade levels on an SEL activity, and the day ended with a pep rally. And finally, here at the high school, the NHS Induction for Juniors was on June 5th. The RoKappa induction ceremony was on June 6th. And then final span from last Friday up to today, Wednesday, with makeup sessions occurring for the next two days, the last two days, with the high school students having their last day of school on Friday for the seniors, and then, and graduation occurring on Friday, the 23rd. And also congratulations to all the graduating seniors, and thank you for all the great two years serving as a student representative.
Thank you, Shivank. And at this time, I would like to recognize our Senior School Board Representative, Shivank Ladapauli. Having a student representative on the board provides distinct advantages for both the board and the student. Boards benefit from the useful insights of their student representative. Students learn how boards and school districts operate and receive a lesson in civics. And all the students in the district have an opportunity to make their views and voices heard by the body that governs the school district. We have been lucky to have Mr. Shivank Ladapauli on our school board for the last two years. Shivank has attended our meetings and updated the board on all of the happenings around our schools throughout Monroe, as we just heard. Aside from his student board member role, Shivank has a long list of accomplishments here at Mun, at the Monroe Township High School. Shivank is on the varsity track team, running the fourth fastest time in the 800 meter. He's on the varsity soccer team. He's also on the DECA Vice President of Finance. On DECA, placing second in the district one year and another year a state finalist. On FBLA, placing first in the district one year and two other years making state and nationals. He's a two-year TED Talker. He's a mock trial district level competition participant. And outside of school, Shivank has volunteered at Soup Kitchens and at the Senior Center, and also coached at Soccer Camp. Shivank, it has been a pleasure to have you sit at this table with us and share your ideas and listen to all you have reported to us. Congratulations on your upcoming graduation on Friday, and on behalf of the Monroe Township Board of Education, we wish you all the best of luck in college next year.
Congratulations and best of luck always.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda are our committee reports. Is there any committee wishing to give a report? Mrs. Belko?
Yes, I have the Curriculum Committee Report. We met on, um, ooh, gosh, we met a while ago already, June 6. And it was, we discussed a few things. I'm going to keep this brief, um, in the interest of time. We went over Grade Eight Social Studies curriculum updates, the summer reading list, which had some updates that were requested by the committee. Um, we talked about, um, the, we had a nice presentation from Dr. Higgins from the high school about Monroe, uh, graduation options and, um, option two for PE. Uh, and annual renewals were reviewed, and then we did receive a brief, um, update from Mr. Maralta regarding the summer programming and the updates there. Any detailed information you want to find, please, um, take the time to, to go look at the videos online. Um, and that's my report.
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Belko? Ms. Ratner?
Yep, I just had, um, one comment. First of all, I just wanted to say that the summer programs, they look fantastic, so thank you everyone who's done work on that. Um, and then I had a question about the high school graduation requirements, which sort of fell into two policies. I wasn't sure, or two committees, I wasn't sure which one would make sense.
I'm going to address it exclusively online.
All right, so I'll wait for that one. Thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions? All right, is there another committee chair wishing to give a report? Okay, Ms. Spearman?
Policy Committee met on Tuesday, June 6 at 8:00 p.m. There were no new Strauss ESME alerts to address, so we spent the entire session on Policy 5460, which is the high school graduation policy. Curriculum Committee was provided with a presentation from administrators concerning the proposed policy changes. Much deliberation and consideration has been given for the past several months. The policy piece is adopting the details impacting the policy accordingly. The agenda has the policy up for first read on tonight's board meeting. The minimum credits changed from 130 to 120, and the mathematics credits changed from 20 to 15. The committee is aware there is a lot of other language and references in the policy which warrant updating, but since this is a mandated policy, the decision is to await the changes from the state through Strauss ESME, which is anticipated to happen in the coming months. We are addressing the items that are specific to district choice. So if you do look at the policy, you'll see a lot of verbiage, like referencing park testing and things that are no longer applicable. We're aware that that's all there, but going to wait for the mandated changes to come through for that, that, that portion. The policy changes recommended here and unanimously supported by the Committee for Approval by the Full Board represent a pathway to start the processes for the district to be able to offer three-year graduation options, potential for dual high school diploma associates degrees as relationships that are established with the public colleges and universities, and further flexibility for students to incorporate more electives of individual interests. So this is item Q on, um, unless things change with the late additions on the agenda, but on the Superintendent's Board, Action 10 member vote tonight.
Does anybody have any questions? Ms. Ratner?
Hi, yes, thank you, um, thank you for the explanation, Ms. Spearman. Um, so I guess my first question, I know that it was addressed regarding the, um, reduction of the math credits, which I actually agree with because I like the idea of them being able to take the very selectives. Um, and I'm a little hesitant regarding not reducing the others to align with the state necessarily. Um, but I understood what the points that were made. I was just confused about the personal finance, um, like, um, or financial lit because it state mandated us two and a half credits, and we require five. Um, and that one, I couldn't necessarily understand the reason for that. So I was just wondering if there was something regarding that.
Dr. Lehman?
So we offer personal finance paired, paired with another, you know, it's personal finance economics. So in order to take, get two and a half credits, we have to have it as a half-year course. We just package it all together as a five-credit, all-in-one kind of course. So that's why it's five credits as opposed to two and a half. And there's a funky thing with health as well, right, 3.75 credits? They're going to take five credits because it's a full-year course. So, um, there are some, you know, idiosyncrasies, but, you know, we meet the, we meet the standards.
And then just my other question was regarding the reduction of the total requirements. Um, if someone enrolls in a dual enrollment program, my understanding is that they receive credits for high school as well as for college. And I just wanted to clarify if that's the case, um, if they would be getting high school credits. Because I know we were reducing it to allow for that program was one of the reasons. And I was wondering if they're still getting the high school credits anyway.
So there are lots of different pathways. The one of the pathways, we have several courses in the high school that students come, they take a course in the high school. By taking the course in the high school during the school day, they also get credits through Middlesex College or University of Delaware. Then there are other pathways that they could take where they would do coursework outside of school and get college credit that way. But the courses they take that we have, the, the true dual enrollment courses that we offer here, they're taking it, they're getting the credit here, but they're also, they have the option, they don't have to do it, to enroll in the college outside of, you know, it's Middlesex College primarily or University of Delaware.
Right, and that's where I look, but I understand the outside element of it, so thank you, appreciate it.
Yep.
Anybody else?
Ms. Spearman? Yes. Comment that I also was a little concerned about, and leaving the performing arts piece there, and I don't know what the other one was, the world languages. And, you know, we, it, there was good discussion of it during curriculum, which I accepted, you know, that the high school academics felt it was important and that we're still looking at this sort of as a living, breathing, moving thing. And so it can be a stages-type thing, and as they get into this later, see that there is advantage to making a change there. It sounds like everyone was open to consideration of it.
I'm listening. I, I have a master's degree in music education. You're not going to find someone who's a bigger advocate for performing arts. I just also understand that not everybody does. And so if someone wants to take additional STEM courses, I don't want that to continue to be a requirement. But I also understood that the reason, the rationales that were being brought up, so.
Does anybody else have any questions for Ms. Spearman?
Finance Committee met on Tuesday, June 6, 7:00 p.m. And this one went long. First item was the monthly review of the attorney fees. For April 2023, the total number was $23,090.44. A little bit more than half, $12,705 of that was toward labor negotiations category. The agenda contains a recommendation from the business administrator to renew the contract of Porzio, Porzio Bronberg and Neuburg Newman through June 30, 2024. The rates for the attorneys stay at $2.10 per hour in this, um, upcoming contract. The rates for paraprofessional staff increased from $145 to $155 an hour. The committee, with the exception of Mr. Payne, was comfortable with recommending the renewal of that contract. Monthly review of the bill list, this was, this is June, so $9,42,745.96 were reviewed and recommended by the Committee for Approval by the Full Board. Additionally, yesterday or early today, we saw an addendum for an additional $5,204,706.25. And those were also due diligence done to review them by the chair, at least. I hope the committee also looked at it when they received it. Lease purchase was the next item. Ms. Allen presented the lease purchase of equipment for the 2023-2024 school year. Total is $3,328,800. Total is $3,328,806. The committee supports the recommendation in the agenda. This is item AK, which is the resolution to proceed with obtaining the financing. Annual contract renewals. The committee reviewed an extensive listing of annual contracts for renewal. They appear throughout the agenda for approval. The committee recommends approval after having had access to the materials via the agenda process, opportunities to ask questions and receive answers accordingly. Were no prohibitive issues identified. For the specific details of which contracts were covered during the finance committee meeting, please refer to the videotaped meeting. The next item is the state aid presentation and a discussion of a resolution to move to a public budget vote. Ms. Allen provided a presentation on state aid to the committee. I highly encourage anyone who hasn't watched the finance committee meeting to watch for that presentation, and unfortunately, it's probably one you kind of have to watch a couple of times to really put the puzzle pieces together. And then we had the ensuing discussion of putting forth the resolution to move to a public vote. On the agenda is item AL, and that's a resolution to authorize the district to shift to April elections for school board items. The discussion of shifting to April and anticipating the need to go out to the public for a vote on the budget has been happening for several months. There was significant challenge to carve out a balanced budget for the upcoming school year. Next year, the anticipation is without being able to go above the 2% cap on the tax levy, we would not be able to present a balanced budget without significant cuts. Instead of assuming the revenue expense position and designing the budget to fit into that, there is a strong contention that giving the public the ability to vote on the budget and potentially exceed the 2% cap on the tax levy, we can then collaborate with the public for their appetite for maintaining the standards of services or rejecting the increase and then engaging the town officials to weigh in on whether the tax levy should be increased or not, and further collaborate with the district to determine the tax levy which the district would need to budget their offerings against. All of the, all of the children are indeed all of our children, board members, district staff, township officials, parents, and residents, and we are looking to engage everyone in the process of understanding the fiscal challenges ahead of our district and participating in a collective direction of how to proceed in these coming years. It is true, there are only a handful of districts in the state currently putting the budget out for a public vote, but it makes sense, a district like Monroe that is not getting a high percentage of their budget covered from state aid would be one of the earlier districts to hit the wall of expenses escalating faster than the cap tax levy can cover and have to make a proactive move to sustain their programming. I remind you that our recent labor contracts are increasing salaries at 4%. Salaries are a significant part of the expense of a school district. If one of your highest expenses is increasing at a rate double that of your revenue, something needs to be done to increase the revenue. Otherwise, the expenses need to be decreased to meet the available revenue. We simply cannot spend more than we are provided in resources. And the last item on the agenda was an auditor update, and for transparency, this was not covered during the June 6th committee meeting, however, there had been discussions at previous meetings concerning the business administrator going out for RFP on auditor services. The candidates were considered between the committee meeting and the monthly board meeting. Ms. Allen does have a recommendation under board action, item 39, to approve Jump Perry and Company as the auditor of record for fiscal year 2023-2024. And that concludes my report.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Spearman? Mr. Payne?
Yeah, I don't have, well, first of all, if you look at the finance meeting, I voted no to move to April. I was in another district beforehand, and we went through that quite a few times, and it's not a, not a pretty thing to happen to your district. But I happened to do some research into that. My son's mentor and teacher at Seton Hall was a former superintendent, so I called him, and this is what he said to me. "Big mistake to move the election to April, especially with your referendum going down recently." You can, pardon me, I'm not too good with my phone. You can bank cap, oh, the 2% cap is a soft cap. You can bank cap for three years if you didn't go to cap in the three-year period. Additional areas, there are waivers for special ed, enrollment growth, and let me go to the next page, and I believe healthcare costs. You also could save money by using your food service as an enterprise account and deduct at least 15% of your utilities from your budget." And that's what he, that's the answer he gave me. I also called Dr. Timothy Purnell, the Executive Director and Human Resources Director of NJSPA, and he sent me, I'll read it really quick. One thing he mentioned last night on the phone to me was that, you know, in April, you have to put up two questions. One would be the 2% cap, two would be what would be over the 2% cap, so that still could be voted down, and you're back to square one with $100,000 out for the election and knocking item number two down in the election, and then you're going back to take out more. And what he said to me was, "On or before May 19th, or the commissioner established date established if the April school election date is changed pursuant to NJ, well, these in the governing body shall certify to the county board of taxation an amount not less than the required local share established pursuant to NJSA. For this purpose pursuant to NJSA, copies of the certification shall be forwarded to the district board of ed and executive county superintendent. The governing body does not have the authority to certify a reduction in the general fund tax levy or debt service fund tax levy. The general fund tax levy certification in the form of a resolution shall be for the base budget amount plus any additional amounts approved by the voters through separate questions." Next, the explanation he gave me. "The governing body may include in the resolution a list of recommended line item reallocations for district board of education consideration. If the amount certified for the base budget is less than the required local share, the certification shall be considered a failure in accordance to NJAC 6A 23A-98." And it was important, he said, "Under state rules, a defeated school budget is subject to review by the district's governing body, which can approve the budget as is or order spending cuts," which we all know. "The spending plan will now be passed back to the school board, which can accept the cut or appeal to the state education commissioner, which we've all talked about. Council members were required to identify specific areas so they can identify areas that they think were top-heavy in our budget, but it's up to us, they'll give us a certain amount of $200,000 and say, 'You cut where it won't hurt education.'" And, I mean, there's a lot more on here, I don't want to take up anybody else's time, but he listed five other items, why not to have your election in April?
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments or questions? Ms. Ratner?
Yep, I just had, I had something pertaining to what Mr. Payne said, but before that, I just had a quick question, and I appreciate Ms. Allen having responded to my questions about, with resounds. I guess my question is why this year is there an additional $400 fee for each event that was added? Because I know right now we have a 10-hour minimum as it is, which is, you know, $800 minimum for our events. That's now going to increase for our events, which sometimes are only like two hours long, to 1,200. And given the budgetary constraints that we have, I have concerns about that, so if you can just address that and then I'll-
This wasn't part of the committee report.
Okay, it was part of like the annual contract. I can ask that later then.
It wasn't one that, it wasn't one of the contracts that we went over in finance.
Okay, I can, I'll ask later.
And I think, Ms. Allen, you forwarded Mr. Teague's detailed response on that.
Right, which, that's what I was saying, that's one part that wasn't there, which is why I was asking about that. I was just curious why the additional $400, but I can address that when we get to the contract section of the agenda. So as Mr. Payne, I also had done some research, so I reached out to both people through the new NJSPA forum as well as NJSPA officials regarding the election change, you know, trying not to cover anything Mr. Payne has already said, but essentially, you know, there are certain things that we won't any longer qualify for, like you can go over the 2% cap for health insurance, but we're actually going down for health insurance next year, but saving our cost savings. I also did see that there are enrollment increases and deferred pension cost increases, and I wasn't sure if that's something that our district would qualify for, but essentially, I had a couple of board members after I had posted that, just asking if anyone's had experience, say, try to avoid it at all costs. In addition to the fact that it's going to cost an additional $100,000, the likelihood is that it will fail, and then the problem is that the decision-making is then being put not necessarily in the hands of our educational experts, our superintendent, our business administrator, assistant superintendent, but in the people on the town council who, you know, most likely don't have a lot of educational experience. And while they're not necessarily going through the budget and saying, well, you're getting rid of this, you're getting rid of that, it's that overall decision. And then the other thing that they had said is in order to do a base budget vote, which is that first question I think Mr. Payne was referring to, you also have to show proof that you've already made those cuts to get to, so things that basically are not included for thorough and efficient education. And that's something where I feel, you know, listen, I feel very strongly we should not cut programs, right? Like, one thing that always comes up is courtesy busting. I would be affected personally by that. I don't want to see that go, but at the same time, as a board member, I know we have a fiduciary responsibility, and I just, I have trouble moving this, spending the 100, $300,000 over three years without at least looking into some of those cost savings or putting it on a November ballot, asking the public so we can still get their input, would you like to pay for courtesy busting? Would you like to, you know, continue our extracurriculars, but do you pay to play again? Something I personally would be affected by, like, this is not me attacking any programs, like, I don't want that to happen, but I also don't want us to have to cut even more than what we already have. So I just wanted to, you know, share that information that I had got. I know we'll, you know, probably discuss this a little bit more later, but I just wanted to bring it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Bora?
I have a comment, and I think I'll save it for when we go to vote on this, but I do not have a question for the finance committee right now.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm ready to present my committee report.
Okay. Anybody have a question? Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So the personnel committee met on Monday, Tuesday, June 6th. Board members in attendance were Ms. Spearman, Ms. Scott, Mr. Tofano, Ms. Kirby, myself, and the administrators in attendance were Mrs. Chanley and Dr. Lehman. We reviewed the current openings in the district. We have 39 vacancies, 16 due to resignations, five due to retirement, six due to transfer, six due to leave, and six are new positions. We had seven responses to our exit survey, and the reasons cited were two retirements, move into an admin job, a career change, move out of state, and two people accepted positions in another district. The superintendent has already found the candidates to fill a few of these teaching positions, and they're on the agenda tonight for approval. The committee then reviewed and approved the recommendation of the job description of team leader for middle school. This is a currently active position in middle school, and a formal job description was shared that detailed the responsibilities. This description is on the agenda tonight for, for vote by the full board. The assistant superintendent's contract was reviewed during the committee meeting. It is on agenda for a vote tonight. The BA's contract is also up for a vote tonight, however, for full transparency, at the time of the committee meeting, it was still not back from the county for a review, and so the board members reviewed the contract last week individually. The committee was then presented with a recommendation for the supervisor of instruction, fine in performing arts, held in PE. Thirteen candidates applied, 12 were interviewed, and after multiple rounds of interviews and candidate presentations, the best candidate is on the agenda tonight for approval. For the position of the Director of Athletics and Co-Curricular Programs, the district received 38 applications, of which eight were interviewed. After multiple rounds of interview and candidate presentations, the committee agreed to the superintendent's recommendation to bring the most suitable candidate on the agenda tonight for approval. And that concludes my committee report. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Bora? Ms. Belko?
I have a question about the job description for team leaders. It's quite generic, and it doesn't say that it's specifically for the middle school, so is that a job description that we may in the future want to put in to the middle school or other schools other than the middle school? Because there is no definition, doesn't specifically state that it's for the middle school.
Ms. Chanley?
Certainly. So we've had team leaders, as we said, for many, many years, now we finally have formalized a job description. I will let you know that it is currently absolutely only for the middle school, because there is conversations about a leader, I don't know if it would be a team, but perhaps a content leader position in the high school, but that would have very different job responsibilities because they do not meet in teams, they, although they meet in, they have some academics, whether you be avid or so on and so forth, but they don't meet on a team with a team planning, so that will be only for the middle school. And I could have, if there's no objection, I don't know if it's appropriate, we could have the word middle school team leader, if there's no objection.
If there's no objection, I would like to see it presented.
I'd be happy to change that.
I agree to what Ms. Belko said.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, are there any other committees wishing to report? Do we have any? Ms. Ratner?
So I just wanted to quickly report on the delegate assembly, which is pseudocommittee. So the delegate assembly met back in May, and just really quickly, they thanked this Irene and Lefree, which I can never say, for her two years as NJSPA president. Welcome Dr. Karen Cordolino, who's currently serving as the Chair of the NJSPA Legislative Committee. They had shared information about the upcoming workshop. Carly Lloyd, the Rutgers Olympic soccer player, is going to be one of the speakers. They shared that they are accepting applications for something called Unsung Heroes. So board members and administrators can nominate various staff members, such as media specialists, coaches, advisors, things of that nature, to receive these awards. I believe it's due in the next few weeks, and it's on the website. And then they shared some of the things that they are doing regarding improvements to NJSPA. One thing similar to the attorney of the day, which they have, is they're adding a BA in residency. I know that they had put out for applications for that, I don't know if they have put anyone in that place. They also had added a board member community forum, which will allow us to network with other board members besides when we are at our county or state meetings. And then they also had shared some information about legislative issues, such as funding was reinstated for, to local districts for the school-based youth services program. They talked about S2, which I tried to, you know, cover my ears because that bothers me, but then we went to the resolutions. There were four resolutions, three of them passed, which, the one that had failed was regarding allowing vocational schools to have representation on the NJSPA nominee committee. And then the three resolutions that had passed, I think, yeah, the first one was failed. These had passed regarding state assessments, which was approved after there was an amendment, a resolution about training for various medical procedures, and then actually a resolution, which I had found really interesting, given our current situation, which came from Thomas River, where, which was approved, and it's new policy language from the state, which will allow board members that hold their elections, or board of educations that hold their elections in November, to put a second question on the general election ballot that would apply for the next fiscal year as well, rather than just the current year. So if you were looking to go above the cap in November, you could now apply those funds to the following year. If this were to go through right now, as the state says, you can only do it for the current school year. So that was something that had passed as well. And that was everything. The next delegate assembly will be in the fall, and I will be sure to send out information as I get it. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Ratner? All right, seeing none, do we have any other committee reports? All right, that concludes our committee reports. The next item on the agenda is our public forum. This public forum is for agenda items only. If you want to come and address the board, please come to the microphone, state your name and municipality, and you have four minutes. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Charles Zeichner. In a post from Monroe Township Educational Page, it was revealed that on June 6th, 2023, Karen Berman, the Chair of the Financial Committee, indicated the board had approved the contract with the Monroe Township Education Association that it could not afford without raising taxes above the 2% cap. Unfortunately, many teachers who accept employment to teach leave education after one or two years. In addition, others who want to teach end up going into another profession. So my question is quite simple. How can a board make such a ridiculous mistake such as this? Don't you do your homework before you agree to a negotiation proposal? Didn't you meet with the superintendent, the business director, and the board if you had proposed settlement to explain the proposed agreement to the entire Board of Education before it voted? Another, and one other thing has to do on the agenda today, where you were contemplating moving the election from November to April, and asking the public to approve going beyond the 2% cap, which will cost the public about $100,000 and assure a smaller turnout which might benefit you, how convenient for you. So I'm very concerned, extremely concerned, about what your folks are doing. My name is Charles Zeichner, and I'm a candidate for the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak?
Hi, I'm Linda Bezowski. I live in Rossmore in Monroe Township. These are very minor points that I'm bringing up. I'll leave my good ones for later because they're not agenda items. In this packet that we have tonight, there are two, I think, errors, unless there's some reason which you could explain. On page twenty-five, in section AZ, you refer to the date period of 2022 to 2023, and on page ninety-four, item AS, the same date, I'll call "error" appears. Is there some particular reason why we're talking about last year? That's my question. Sorry, twenty-four. No. Substitutes are approved. I mean, perhaps it's a typo. I don't know, but I'm asking because they're actual items.
Thank you very much. I will let you know that it is under my knowledge base, and I will correct myself if I'm wrong. All substitutes for the coming year are approved in August. I know that sounds silly perhaps because the school year is coming to an end, but I'm going to assume that these people's paperwork was completed and then requires us to board approve them. So I'm going to make the statement and I will double-check and I will correct it if I am wrong at the next board meeting, but to my understanding, all substitutes are approved in August for the September through July first school year. So I'm going to make the assumption, without having any knowledge of speaking, I have to speak with my secretary to confirm that these people's paperwork came through at this time and therefore we have a responsibility to approve them, although the school year is coming to an end.
Okay. Well, the other one was, I forget which one, I think it was AS, is Student Activity Fund. So again, why would we be approving something for last year?
It's not last year. The current school year is the 2223 school year. Our school, this school year currently that we're in is the 2223 school year. On the agenda, it's for the 2223 school year. That's this year.
Okay, Mike, well then, Mike, please clarify.
It comes out of this budget. It comes out of the 2223 school budget.
At the end of the year.
Yes.
That's what I'm not understanding.
We have nine million dollars that we paid in our bill.
No, I don't. I heard Ms. Allen say that. Okay, thank you. I'll come back with my other comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Steven Barandica. Good evening. I thought it would be appropriate to introduce myself and put a face to the name on the agenda. My name is Steve Barandica, and my name was presented to the Board of Education for approval tonight for the position of Director of Athletics and Co-Curricular Programs. I earned a bachelor's degree in athletic training from King University, a master's of education in higher ed administration with a sport management concentration from Auburn University, as well as principal and supervisor certifications from Thomas Edison University. In the past ten years, I've had the pleasure of working within athletic departments at the professional level within the NFL, the collegiate setting with Auburn University Athletics, and at the secondary school level, most recently with Westfield High School. I also serve as an adjunct professor and clinical preceptor with three New Jersey universities and am the current president-elect for the Athletic Trainer Society of New Jersey. These positions have undoubtedly prepared me for the position of Director of Athletics. Despite my responsibilities as the head athletic trainer and equipment manager at Westfield, I always welcomed the opportunity to learn more and became directly involved in projects that would enhance my ability to lead an athletic department in the future. Under the mentorship of the Director of Athletics, I played an integral part as a pseudo-athletic director in projects that involved integration of technology, facility upgrades, staff evaluations, community engagement, budgeting, and increasing student-athlete well-being, to name a few. I have developed an ability to connect with student-athletes, coaches, staff, boosters, and parents throughout my career, an asset that I believe is essential as an administrator. Likewise, I understand the importance of student health and safety, as this has been my primary responsibility as the head athletic trainer. I am motivated and ready for the opportunity to hit the ground running in this new position. As an administrator, I will ensure the student-athletes are always healthy and safe, that they understand the importance of an education, that they learn to use their platform to make a positive change in society, and most importantly, that they have fun and enjoy representing their school community, a community that I would love and would be honored and proud to represent and serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak?
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Priyanka Ranganath and I'm a graduating senior this year at the Monroe Township High School. I have been a percussion student under Mr. Snyder's tutelage from the fourth grade, and it has been a pleasure to learn from and get to know Mr. Snyder. As you probably know, given our immense accolades and talented youth, especially the percussion, percussionists you've seen recognized today, Monroe Township's band program stands out among others, especially due to our vertical teaching model in which students can work with a professional from fourth grade up until twelfth grade. With that being said, speaking on behalf of all percussion students, we couldn't have asked for a more passionate, talented, and dedicated individual to proudly call our percussion teacher throughout all these years. As an innocent third-grade girl, I was rather excited and nervous to join band at that early of an age. When we were introduced to all the teachers and possible instruments to choose from, I couldn't help but feel a little overwhelmed as there were so many different choices on our mark sheet, and it felt rather intimidating to be tested right then and there for what our instrument would be for the rest of our lives. When I first met Mr. Snyder at that band orientation, there was an automatic sense of encouragement that I could gauge as he recognized my rhythmic talent right away. Even though the other instructors recognized my musical talent as well, Mr. Snyder was the only one to put a one-plus-plus and a star next to my attempt to follow the beat and even let me try out notes on a real marimba for the first time in my life. That day, despite any notions I had on whether or not I should join percussion as a young Indian girl, as back then, the field of percussion seemed rather male-dominated, I walked away with confidence, not only about percussion being the right fit for me, but major excitement that I would be working with a person like Mr. Snyder, someone who from day one was willing to push the envelope in terms of the way he enables his students to learn, appreciate, and truly love the art form. Right now, as a senior, I could not thank Mr. Snyder more for all that he has done to mold me, not only with my experience as a percussionist, but also as a strong, confident, and vocal person that you are seeing today. Throughout my experience with Mr. Snyder as my teacher, I learned to discover my love for percussion and have been exposed to a plethora of different musical instruments and experience throughout this journey. Every single time, Mr. Snyder has always put in 200% effort into whatever he does and commits to, thereby instilling the same positive energy in his students to set goals and achieve great things. As accomplished of an individual he is, humility is one of his most admirable qualities, and the time he puts in towards the betterment of each and every student is truly commendable. Mr. Snyder deserves the credit for not only this percussion program, but putting our entire school on the map for the incredible accomplishments throughout the years at several festivals, concerts, and competitions. Additionally, the diversity of not only the people, his selection of pieces to perform and opportunities are so noteworthy. As students, we do not only learn music and about percussion itself, but Mr. Snyder has worked towards expanding our lens of multicultural appreciation by introducing elements from all around the world beyond a typical percussion ensemble, such as tabla from North India, murdangam from South India, and the cojon from Spain, just to name a few. As a student with a deep interest in community outreach and civic engagement, I can attest to the fact that our whole town is really appreciative of all that Mr. Snyder has done, as I've worked with him firsthand to bring our percussion program to expand greater into the community through percussion performances at events such as the Ohm 5K Walk and Run, as well as senior citizen communities around town, thereby spreading the love for music throughout percussion, which truly fascinates others, thanks to Mr. Snyder's hard work, immense time and passion that is evident within him. Our school district is in need of Mr. Snyder and will only thrive more than it ever has if he receives the position as the Supervisor of Instruction, of Instruction, Fine, Performing Arts, and PE. With that being said, on behalf of the entire student body and all the talented youth for the future, it would be our greatest gift if Mr. Snyder receives this esteemed position. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Howard Liu. I'm a Monroe resident for fifteen years. Does a great job, Priyanka. I'm actually here also to support Mr. Snyder in his bid for Supervisor of Fine and Performing Arts and Health and Physical Education. I can't wait to see his business card. But I've been, we have three children that are currently in the high school. We have two that are athletes since ninth grade, as well as taking electives in arts. And our son, who you've met several times, Jayden Liu, is, you know, sports and music. And so maybe I'm here to brag a little bit. He's graduating in two days. But really, it's to say that as a parent, as much as you can know the excellent program that Monroe has in athletics, arts, and music, you know, I'd like to be able to speak to that and also speak about Mr. Snyder himself. He, we have known him since Jayden was a fourth grader, and through that period of time, we've seen him help him grow as a student, as a person, as a musician, in and out of the classroom. Mr. Snyder actually even emailed me once and said, "Jayden's not participating well." So, and early in the career, and it helped us drive forward. And then in sixth grade, he called, and I remember it was during Super Bowl Sunday, and he said, "Jayden made CJMEA," and it was, you know, really exciting. So we just know that he cares about his students, as Priyanka has also said, and we know that he's helped grow this program from not just the number of students that have performed, but also the quality of the music, the invitations that we've gone to. As a parent that travels everywhere with their kids, you know, you sit there and you're at conferences, you're in the school, and you see how he interacts with others, with the other parents, with his colleagues, with other teachers, with his peers. There, it's just amazing to watch him kind of work and coordinate with others. And finally, we know that he's a leader. He's currently President of CJMEA, the Central Jersey Music Educators Association, and it's just amazing what he's done, the programs that our students have been able to participate in. So I just want to say one more time, myself, many parents that are here, we're here to support him in his appointment as Supervisor. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
So I'll be last but not the least, and I'll keep it a little short to add on one more flair to appointing Mr. Snyder. So my son, Arav Naral, here, as you see, has been, he has been teaching him again since fourth grade, ever since he remembers probably, and he has helped him grow and nurture with his percussion talents all through his, all these years. He's a sophomore now. And as you saw, you know, he's put him in through various, and I'm starting with his specifics to him, to just, Arav, he helped him through all the competitions and events and whatever interest kind of he saw, you saw tonight as it was only one category in NJG, jazz band. Arav was the only one competing, but he himself represented Arav on that band just because he is so much into jazz. Having said that, I would also like to add that typically you would like, you know, everybody can follow, you know, established curriculum process and whatnot, but it's when there are times that are challenging when you realize one's characters and strengths. And one time, as we all went through, was COVID time. So I just kind of briefly put in a word that I wanted Arav to try at a Juliet camp or whatever, not, and he went and collaborated with Juliet Professor and other musicians and held a percussion ensemble camp, summer camp virtually for all these students, and that gives so much purpose. Music for me personally is very therapeutic, so I always am a proponent of music and performing arts. And I think that was a wonderful opportunity and experience for these kids because that pulled them through, because they are coming, collaborating through virtually, and they all got to perform and learn a lot. One other, he also then has been, Mr. Snyder has been very, I would like to just add that, he has been very instrumental in bringing up Monroe's music and percussion program to a forefront with all these, there are other staff members, but we were just focusing on him. So he, WGI, jazz band, CGMEA, every time, he's played an instrumental role in bringing these students to the forefront, not just within the state, but also outside of the state. We had students win WGI through entire East Coast this year. And so it is time for us to all support and elevate him so we can help our students actually grow and rise further and get further accomplishments. Thank you.
Thank you. So anybody else wishing to speak? Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Vanessa Forrest. I've lived, I grew up here, my kids grew up here. I have two grandchildren now in the school district. I will have three next year. And my question is about changing the election to April and asking for more money from the taxpayers. I don't understand how you can justify that. Why, what is the purpose of moving the election to April and costing the taxpayers that hundred thousand dollars per year and, and saying that you just, you don't have money? I'm just trying to wrap my head around this. Can you tell me what the justification is?
Ms. Allen, did you want to address that?
So moving the election to April will help us to go above, you know, to meet our needs here in the district and to create new program, you know, to even keep the programs we have.
I don't follow that. I don't understand how, what the correlation is between moving the election to April. I don't understand the purpose.
In order to go above the 2% cap.
Because in order to go above the 2% cap that we are limited to, because we have really, we get very little revenue. That's our biggest revenue is the tax levy, and we are limited to 2% of that, of an increase every year on that. So that amounts to about two million dollars.
No, but what I'm saying is, we can't do that in November? We have to do that in April?
No. In November, we are, yeah, it's a state requirement, and you are limited to that 2% cap. In April, that's, it's different because now the voters get to vote on the budget and you, we can, we can raise the cap, we can make it higher, and then the voters get to vote, and if they can vote yes or no, but you have the opportunity to, to increase the cap at that point, only in the April election.
Only in the April?
Yes.
You can't do, is it a timing thing? What is, why, I don't understand.
It's just the state, it used to be that way statewide. It used to be, everybody had to go to vote and back in two, I think, yeah, 2012, until it was changed, and you could, the schools could elect to go to the November election if they wanted to. Most of them did. Very few stayed with the, the April election. But that, because then in November, the public doesn't get to vote on the budget. It's just, we just put the budget forward really, and we approve it, the county approves it, and that's it. You don't get a say in the budget, whereas in April, the public does get a say.
Okay, so, but I thought I heard earlier about you can add questions onto the ballot for November?
You can. You're limited, there, there are some limits with that. It's also, you wouldn't, in November, that, that separate question would go to vote in November. So, you know, you start your school, your budget year in July, so you wouldn't know until November if you, that extra was approved. So anything, you have to be able to get through without needing that, really.
So why can't we just?
And then it's a one, I mean, it could be a one-time thing.
Add it onto this November and then work from there?
It's, it's, we can't do it at this point. It would have to be for the next, if we were, if we were to keep the November election, it would be for the next November election, not this year. It's too late for that. But it's something that, it's probably not, we don't know that it's going to be just a one-time thing, you know, where we need to go above the cap, the 2% cap.
I think I have to do a little more research because I'm just, it doesn't make sense. Thank you, though. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak?
Hi, Pradeep Malum, Monroe Township. So on the same thing, same question. So this is not like a one question, so I expect like a couple of answers. So let's say our budget is like around like 146 million right now, and our 2% cap with that, it becomes 149. And let's say in April, we put out an approval for 160 million. So let's say people are generous and they voted up and everything is good. So let's say people are generous and they voted up and everything is good. Now for 24 and 25, our base is 160 or 149 for the 2% cap?
That is a good question.
That's a very good question. The 2% is on the levy portion, not the budget.
That's true, yeah.
The 2% has to be applied to the levy number, not the budget number. So our budget includes our state aid and the other revenue sources.
Okay, so in 160 million, if people approve, what is our levy? Because people are paying that extra, whatever, what are the 11 million that we talked about?
The levy for this year?
Yeah, for 24, 25, whatever. So when we put out budget in April, we are putting out budget for 24, 25, right? And let's say people approved it. So that means the township people are paying 11 million additional tax levy
Right.
towards the schools.
Right.
Okay. Now, that levy is added to our base to increase for 25, 26 year?
Yes, and then you go 2% above this. You get the, you maintain that plus the 2% for the next year. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Okay.
So, and if people voted down this question, do we have this 149 number? We can work with it, like, and do we know like upfront, before going to the ballot, do we know like what programs will be cut down if people voted down that 160 million question? We don't know. We have to go back to the drawing board and then we have to figure it out again?
Well, if the, if the budget was voted down, then the district would have to take the budget and meet with the town council and the mayor and present the budget to them. And what has typically happened in the past, previously, when we went out to vote for the budget years ago, was the council would recommend how much to reduce it by, and then the administration would work to reduce the budget by that amount and would go back and present it to the town council, and then the council would have a vote on it. At the end of the day, we're one community here in Monroe. And we all need to take, we're all stakeholders here, and we all need to play a role in our school district. Our school district does not get the funding that it deserves from the state that we are owed. We do not have the revenue source, as Ms. Beerman said, to continue to fund everything that we currently have going forward if we're not increasing our revenues and our expenses are increasing. This is allowing the voters, the residents of Monroe Township, to have a voice in our school budget. If you want to vote it down, that means that there's going to be cuts. The budget will have a budget hearing, it will be presented to the public. Everything that's in the budget will be presented. You will know upfront what we've put in the budget, and you'll have a vote. If the voters vote it down, then there are going to be cuts. Personally, I would much rather see us as a school district not cut things like we saw towns around us cutting courtesy busing and cutting staff and trying to go out to our voters, our residents, to say, "We want to continue to keep our schools excellent. We want to increase what we have here. We don't want to decrease, we don't want to cut teachers, we don't want to cut programs, we don't want to take busing away. We want to continue it." And that is your voice through your vote.
No, I'm with that, like, not to cut the programs or any staff or any programs. But I'm thinking, I'm asking these questions like, because like, what if that scenario happens? Right?
And the town council doesn't have to uphold the vote from the public even. They have the opportunity to increase it by more than we asked.
Yeah, they have the opportunity to correct it. But our town politics and everything is like, we know. But if, if township also, like, the council also, like, they don't want to chip in anything, then we have to go back to drawing board and we have to work with our 149 million budget in this example. Right? Okay.
There's another avenue of appealing to the county commissioner. So if we really felt like, oh my God, there's, how much more can we cut? You know, that you could go to the county commissioner and look for solace there also. But again, we, we have an amazing district, right? Amazing programming, a lot of above adequacy programming. It starts to get jeopardized if we can't maintain the services, let alone be able to grow them. We want to be in a position, right, for growth, not a struggle to maintain. And we're not even looking at that at this point. We're looking at a, ooh, we can't maintain it, so. So we took this as an opportunity to make it more inclusive amongst the entire community and the town council, as well as the board and the district.
And Ms. Beerman, when you presented the committee report, you said like, there are some districts still going vote on, like, in April. Can we get like a few names?
Yeah, it's a handful, there's, there are only 13 of them, I think, that voted in 2023.
Yeah, I know New Brunswick, I think is one of them.
Westfield.
Westfield, yes.
They haven't done it yet, but they voted.
So this 13, the 13 in whole New Jersey or 13 in Middlesex County?
No, New Jersey.
And the whole New Jersey, 13 district?
13 in the state out of the 600 districts.
Okay, thank you.
Currently, but they're seeing this as more and more of these conversations are happening amongst the local boards because of the capping. And it has triggered some conversations in Trenton, but now good luck getting your state legislators to act on it, that the 2% cut, the cap is maybe not sustainable, and they have to start addressing that. So we might get solace there. But it's not there yet, and we're going to have a need for this next cycle's budget. So we're being proactive about positioning ourselves in a place to at least be able to have the conversation about, do we want to sustain the programming by raising the money or not?
Okay, got it. And on the high school graduation requirements reduction. So if the policy is adapted and the administration is working on the curriculum, so when it is going to affect, for the class of 24 also, it is, it is going to be effective or like class of, like, or it is going to only affect to on class of 27 or 28? So if it comes into the picture, like, which year, which students are going to be, like, from when it is going to be effective, immediately or like, or whoever is coming entering ninth grade from then?
After working with the supervisors, Dr. Lehman, myself, and Dr. Higgins, it will go into effect if it is approved through the first and second read for the class of 2024. So, and they would be able to meet the requirements, and then other classes would be made available for those people that are switching and taking other areas other than the mathematics. But the mathematics classes will be available for those children that would like to take a fourth year of math.
Okay, thank you. So on topic of the mathematics, like, as I requested last time, and then it was discussed in the curriculum and policy meeting, but can we take a decision on taking the classes in the summer and then coming back to the school in the fall and then give the test and then promote it to the next level of mathematics or like skip that level of mathematics? So can we take the decision along with the HS graduation as well?
Yeah, that's something that will go hand in hand with the expansion of our Option Two program. It's more complicated at the high school. There's much more rules in terms of when you can take courses for credit versus when you can't. And it's something we have to look at in sync with our course of studies. If we have students that are taking courses in the summer and they're not counting for credit, we want to make sure we have enough courses when they get back into school. You know, if they're taking advancement courses, that they have enough to meet requirements on the way out. We don't want to run out of courses and have to develop them in a rush. So it'll be a calculated approach to do that, to take a look at what course is appropriate. There are some foundational ones that we may have beliefs that should be the year-long piece. And then maybe there are other courses that are more appropriate for, you know, acceleration or credit in the summer.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak?
Hi, Stephen Ryback, Riviera Drive, Monroe. I really would just like to reinforce what was said previously about Yale Snyder. He is one fine human being, great teacher, and fantastic musician. I had nothing but admiration for him and loved all the things that he did. And he's an asset to this district and to all our students. The other thing I wanted to bring up was this discussion about moving the election to April and going beyond the 2% cap. Mr. Payne brought up some questions, Rattner brought up some ideas that I think should be explored. From what I've been seeing, senior community at least, would not look favorably upon either one or for that matter, any board member that supports it. I can't see that happening to this district. I think that really you need to look into all different areas before you put that before the voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Michelle Armino, 9 Nathaniel Street, Monroe. I'm going to ask a few questions first procedurally. And with all due respect to Michelle Scott, would this, would the Jamesburg rep be eligible to vote on this?
Yes.
A resolution AL regarding, and can you explain why?
Mr. Gagliardi, would you like to?
Because it's a district-wide issue, and it affects the children of Jamesburg.
Okay, but these are citizens of Monroe who are voting. And will the Jamesburg, will the tuition for Jamesburg then go up if we have to increase the tax levy?
Is that question for me?
Uh, whoever.
It goes up if the cost per pupil goes up going.
I can't, we can't hear.
The tuition at Jamesburg only goes up if the cost per pupil spending goes up, so.
But if the voters of Monroe and the citizens of Monroe, and again, with all due respect to Jamesburg, and again, this is a procedural issue. If, if the voters in Monroe have to pay additional fees as the tax levy and not Jamesburg, then I don't know, you know, again, I'd like clarification.
The tuition's still based on the per pupil cost.
The tuition is based upon the per pupil cost. So you're only talking about one of the variables in the equation, right? So if Jamesburg sends the same number of children, but the Monroe student population drops, the fixed costs are the same, the per pupil population goes up. Similarly, if Jamesburg sends the same number of children and the number stays static, then the increase in cost is essentially proportional per pupil for children from Monroe and Jamesburg. So there are more variables than just the size of the tax levy.
Okay, but I, I, all right, so you say. How many votes to pass this resolution does it require? Like a majority of the president?
Majority of the voting members of the board.
Majority of, so 10. There are 10 voting members, you say?
Yes.
So a majority of that, which would be six.
That is correct.
Okay. The next referendum, when is the, based on this, when is the next referendum going to be proposed? Because I think that's very important.
So what we're currently in the process of doing is we're working through Mr. Teig's office because what we had was we had an opportunity to meet with the mayor's office and to have conversations about help. We need help, how can you help us? We are having conversations about if we're going to go out to another referendum or is there anything that the township is able to assist us with? So what we're doing is we're doing two things currently. We had our data comprised and compiled. Unfortunately, due to the horrific weather, we did not have our LA and CE meeting where we had on the agenda to discuss, and we are ready to discuss the survey because we want to get the input from the stakeholders, how they feel about the referendum and so forth. And then we also had Mr. Teig go out to our estimator and break down all of the components of the referendum to say HVAC, boiler, roof, apogoth, middle school, HVAC. Thank you, the chillers from the roof, all the different components. And we just got back literally within the last few days, the estimations. So what's going to happen now is we're going to sit down, we're going to give it to the Board of Education, we're going to go over the survey, and we're going to get a feel for what our next steps will be. We didn't want to rush into anything because we want to see if it's all possible. We're bringing it back to the mayor, which we were asked to do, to see if there's any assistance or help that we could possibly get through the township for the pending high needs issues like the roof, HVAC, boilers.
But, but did we miss an opportunity to put a referendum on the November ballot if we stuck with that?
I'd like to make a point of order, that's not on the agenda.
No, the whole, yes, this is a procedural thing. Thank you for your point of order.
That's not on the agenda.
But this is, but it has to do.
The referendum is not an agenda item, this is for agenda items.
Madam President, it has to do with going to, going out and changing the vote.
No, it does not.
Well, it does to me, and I think that it's legitimate. But I will move on for the sake of, because I don't do this arguing kind of thing. I do believe that if Ms. Allen presented to the committee, it should, that presentation should have been available. This is a very serious change for the citizens of Monroe. That presentation should have been available to the public. This is the Board of Education public meeting. And to say that everybody can go and look at that, that is not what I believe the intent and purpose of the Open Public Meetings Act. This is where the public comes to hear the deliberation and the discussion. That presentation should have been for all of the public at the public meeting. I would ask you to table this based on the fact that the public wasn't fully informed as to this. And I'd like to talk about the possible consequences of the change. I talked about the referendum, that the time we should be using for those purposes. I think it's actually less democratic. When we changed over to the November election, I thought, well, wait a minute, the voters aren't going to have a choice on the budget. They're still not going to have a choice on the budget in April. If they vote the budget down, it's just a matter of a few tweaks and the voters will be overridden. And if you think that it's going to be okay to ask people to go way over the cap and pay higher taxes, now I know there's problems with that, but if we're going over the cap, how are we ever going to pass a referendum? You have the, you're not listening to the voters. The way you parse this is not going to work. Based on, you are really representing the people of Monroe. You're real, we haven't really been engaged, you're making these decisions without the public. The referendum should speak for itself. They have failed. So the public is telling you, we need a different way to do this. The cost of the election, I ask that the resolution either be tabled or provided another time. And you mentioned something like a carrot stick.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Armino.
And I think that's wrong, and I'm sure, could you give me 30 seconds?
No, I'm sorry, I cannot.
Because you don't want to hear the truth. Thank you.
No, because that wouldn't be fair to the rest of the members of the public that had four minutes. And just so, I would like to.
If they had asked for it, you could have made that decision.
And I would just like to clarify, the finance committee meeting was publicly available to anybody to come here to watch the presentation. The meeting notice was posted, as we always do. The video of the meeting is available online to anybody. And it is, that is something that we have changed as a board in recent years. Previously, under other boards, committee meetings were not televised, they were not recorded, and they were not posted to the website. So we do a very good job here in Monroe, being very transparent. And anyone who wanted to come could have come and watched it live here in person, or they could continue to watch it on our website. Thank you. Anybody else wishing, I'm sorry, Ms. Armino, you're out of order. Anybody else wishing to speak?
George Gunkelman, 5 Kelly Court, Monroe Township. When some people talk, the clock's running. When people up there talk, sometimes the clock stops and sometimes it doesn't. What is the selective measure that determines when you stop it and when you don't? Stop it now because I want an answer. There's no answer? That was a question. What determines when you stop it?
Our board policy determines it, and our tech department knows that if the administration or anyone on the board begins talking, the clock stops. And that is the policy. We have no control up here. I am not in control of the clock, nor is anybody at this table. It is manned by our tech department. I apologize if.
Can you see it from where you are?
Yes, I can.
Okay, then you could see that when you were talking during the last questions, it didn't stop. Did you see that?
Yes, it did stop.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. The one on this side didn't, which seemed to be the one that ran out.
I'm sorry, I generally look at who's speaking to me and I'm not staring at the clock. If, if the clock did not stop, I apologize for that. Again, the board has instructed our IT department when to stop the clock and when to have it run. If something did not happen this evening, I apologize for that, and I'll ask our tech department to be more cognizant of the fact that it needs to stop when we speak.
Okay, I'm, my questions here really are about this, changing the date and the motives behind it. It's sort of unclear, and, and some of the explanations that have been given are also unclear. You know, is there a simple explanation as to why we're moving it? Is the explanation, in fact, so that you can get free of the cap? That's a question.
Yes. The answer's yes.
Yes, so you, you're, what is the purpose of the cap?
State mandated.
It's a state mandated cap. If, if the district does not want-
So the purpose of changing the date is to avoid the state mandated cap? And then if that is not approved, it gets passed to the town council and the mayor? Is that correct?
And when Governor Christie was in office, he made a, a law, in essence, that created for districts that wanted to stay under a two percent cap to not have to go out to the voters anymore to vote on the budget. If you, if you could not keep your budget under the two percent cap, you were required then to go out in April for a vote of your budget. What we are being recommended by our business administrator is that we will not be able to sustain our current budget going forward under the two percent cap. Her recommendation is to bring it out to the public to have a vote, because we would need to be asking the voters to approve going over the two percent cap to keep in place the programs that we currently have.
And that can't be done except in April?
Exactly.
So the only way we can do that is by spending a hundred thousand dollars like we did on the referendum that failed?
Yes.
Okay. Special elections we know have a low turnout. Even the last primary that we went through had a terribly low turnout. When we had the special election for the referendum, we didn't get as, even as many votes for it as there are students in the school. So now we want to move everything to a, to one of these remote dates where the only thing on it is going to be the school issue and, and the election of board members whose terms are going to be extended because of this move. Is that correct?
That is what we are required to do by statute if we would like to take the vote out to the public to go over the two percent cap. It's much like the fire district budgets that are conducted every single year.
On Saturdays in February from nine AM to two PM.
Right, and, and almost nobody votes on them.
But they, but that is their-
If that is a citizen, you know that.
The percentage of participation in fire district votes is less than five percent. If that's the model you're looking for, don't tell your students, because we don't need any more undemocratic attitudes in our country. Don't tell them, because you're searching for a low turnout.
We can't control-
And it hasn't worked in the past, I don't see, you know, we have a problem, we have to get better communications to our community, and it just isn't happening. If we don't get as many votes for the referendum as we have students in the school, obviously we're not even communicating to the parents of our children. Thank you.
I disagree with that comment, but thank you for your comments. Good evening.
Good evening. Sarah Shama, fifteen Edward Avenue. First, let me start off by saying that I had a wonderful experience at BizTown, because that was really fun for the kids, so I want to start off by saying that. But let me ask a couple of questions, because I'm a bit confused. So what are we able to do in November, if we kept elections in November? Anything?
Just the candidates.
Ms. Allen?
If, if we put in the budget for the, in the, for that, for that school year, if we propose a separate question?
So one of like the, the two questions that they post all the time? Okay.
That, that question would be voted on by the voters, so that would be kind of like a separate thing in November?
And would that be-
You have the base budget and then you have the separate question.
So is the, is it a bait, like question A is base budget, question B is about the two percent cap, or no?
No.
Well, it's like a specific thing, like something within the guidelines that you are looking to spend for that year, and it can't be like capital outlay, it can't be something for thorough and efficient education, is, there are various, there are some guidelines.
So it has to be a specific question, like allocate X amount of money towards this program?
Yes, yes, and, and again, you wouldn't get that, you wouldn't know if you're getting that money until November, when that's like the middle of your, your year, your budget year.
So the November-
So you may not get it, you can't really, you have to be able to get through the year, not counting on that.
So this November, if we did something in November, it would be for the twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four year, school year?
Yes. If, if we had, yeah.
And then when would you be allocated that money?
No, I'm, let me, let me rephrase.
Okay.
So if we, if we, suppose we keep the November election, or, yeah, so will we do our next budget for twenty-four, twenty-five? We could put in a separate proposal question, and that would be for the following year, but it wouldn't be voted on until the following November.
So November of twenty-four?
Correct.
Okay, but you're proposing to push till April, which could potentially cost the town a hundred thousand dollars, right? And if we do it this April, we have to do it the two Aprils after that as well?
You don't have to, no.
Okay, so it could be a one and done?
It could, you could change it back, there's no restriction.
Okay, so there is no three years that we have to do?
No.
Okay, so, but we could potentially lose the hundred thousand dollars if it doesn't go in our favor, right?
It is a cost, you would hope that-
It does go, right.
There would be a benefit, but there is a cost, yes.
Okay, so it's a risk that we're taking, essentially?
Spend a hundred thousand and cut ten million?
Yeah, it's, it's, spend, you know, the cost of the election versus cutting potentially ten million dollars out of a budget and losing staff and-
An arbitrary number, I don't know what the number is.
An arbitrary, right. Cutting, cutting staff and cutting programs, so, and again, it gives you the opportunity to go to the town council and also to the, to the county superintendent and the commissioner of education.
You know, if the town council, if they came up with something and then, and even if we agreed to it and it went to the county, the county could still say, no, that's not enough. They could look at it and say, no, that's not going to be enough for you to get through. So they have the opportunity to overturn what the township does in, in our favor, and then we go back.
The county can overturn the town.
Correct, and then we go back again and, you know, work through, but they couldn't, the town, at that point, the township couldn't make it any lower than they already did.
Now, have we ever been in that situation before, where we've like-
Yes.
And, and we've gone to the county and, and they've helped us?
Before two thousand twenty, twelve.
We've gone to the township. When the budget has failed, we've gone to the, to the township.
And the township has been in support or has helped?
Yes.
Okay, so you've been able to meet your budget needs because the town stepped in?
Yes, in essence, they approved the budget, they're, I think the last time it was when Dr. Hamilton was here-
Twenty-eleven.
And they went, they were asked to cut, I believe, I may be incorrect, I think it was a million dollars they were asked to cut, the district did, and the township voted and approved the budget.
Okay. I guess the, the concern, you know, from people is the spending of the hundred thousand dollars and if it is a one and done, you know, and if it's, and if the town will vote for it in our favor, and how will that play out? You know, because we have seen referendums fail, we have seen disconnect between the town and the board, and, you know, and just from like building and the, the ratio of kids and, and the infrastructure to support. So I guess that's my concern too, right, is will we be able to mend all of these issues and provide the schools with what they need? Because, you know, I'm a huge proponent of athletics and all the clubs and, and everything that we can do for our kids. So at the end of the day, none of us want to see anything get cut, but we also want to see us all thrive. So how are we going to do that and do that in a fiscally responsible way? Thank you.
Thank you. And I think in essence, that's exactly what we are striving for, is putting the students and, and our district first, and putting that out to the public to have a voice in that. If you value the programs that we have and you support what we're doing and you want to continue, continue to see that, you would come out and vote for the school budget. If you don't value the education and you don't think we're being fiscally responsible and you want to see a lot of cuts to our programs and services that we're currently offering, then you would come out and vote no. But it, again, it is up to the residents to have a voice, to come out, and, and, again, I, I was, you know, I, I think we took this, the Board of Education took away the public's, right, to have a voice in, in that years ago when it changed to November. So I, I think that this is, this is giving, you know, the comment before that this was not democratic, this is exactly what a democracy is, we're giving you the, we're asking you to come out and vote and have a say. Whether you come out and exercise your vote, that's a personal decision, that is nothing we can control. In the last referendum, we went out and across town, across every venue, and we communicated it, and we had a low turnout. That is not due to the efforts of this board, that is the apathy of, of the community now coming out to vote. Is there anybody else wishing to speak? All right, seeing none, I will close the public forum. The next item on the agenda is the Assistant Superintendent's report. Dr. Lehman?
Sure. Real quickly, just wanted to congratulate all of the students and athletes, student athletes we recognized earlier this evening. This is an exciting week, I've been able to attend the majority of the Moving Up ceremony so far this week. We have the middle school graduations, both of them tomorrow, and we have the high school graduation on Friday. So congratulations to everyone that's moving up and graduating. It's been an exciting year, and you've earned a nice relaxing summer. And that concludes my report.
Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Lehman? All right, seeing none, our next item on the agenda is our superintendent's report. Mrs. Chanley?
Good evening once again. We, we're in a fabulous time of year, we're very excited, we just finished in the pack for those of you that were able to join us, to acknowledge our student athletes and our student performers in both the arts and music, was very excited. I know that we sent out over four hundred letters, and it's, it's due to the, the hard work and the collaboration of, of everyone, the parents working with their children at home, community members really acknowledging our, our children when our children go out and play in the various different communities, our staff, and tremendous support of this Board of Education, so I wanted to take a moment just to acknowledge that. Additionally, I've had the pleasure of being on the road myself, as Dr. Lehman was saying, for this entire month or five weeks or six weeks, whatever it might be since our last board meeting, and really visited a lot of the schools. I will tell you, I got sick for the first time with a cold because I was hugged by little children, and I guess my body's not used to all the little kids in all the elementary schools, and they do love to hug, and they are wonderful. So I was able to visit a lot of the schools directly, to go into the buildings, to go into the classrooms, as well as joining in at the carnival for world language, which was a lot of fun. I got to go to the Oak Trees Field Day, I thought I was in Disney World, it was beyond an extravagant event, it was fantastic. Had an opportunity, I, I would say that one of the moments that was nearest and dearest to my heart was the graduation for the transition to adulthood program that took place right in this very high school. It was beyond, I, I know that some of our board members were there, and I'm, I'm looking at Ms. Belko because she was there, and for me, it was very personal. When we moved in to the middle school, I had the opportunity, because we renovated the building, which is currently now the middle school, but it was the high school, and I renovated it, worked, worked personally, and I remember when we had that class, those classrooms for the first time for our multiple disabled and our, our autistic children, and I remember picking out the beanbags, picking out the carpet, painting the walls, and trying to make it a, a, an environment that was conducive, and all of these children are now graduating, and to be there with Dr. Lehman, who also was the principal at Woodland, while I was the principal at the middle school, they were our kids, and they made us feel like they were our kids. It was, it was great, it was just a wonderful day, and it, it makes all of the, the sadness and sometimes some of the nastiness that we deal with, take a backseat, it's not important. We're here for the kids, we're here for these great things, we are so lucky to be a part of such a wonderful community that it really puts into perspective the evilness that sometimes intrudes, although it might be a small amount, and put it right on that back burner, and it's all about the positive experiences that we have with all of our children. That being said, from an academic standpoint, I was very, very pleased for the first time, and I don't know how many years if it ever did happen, to welcome Dr. Valani, our Jamesburg superintendent with Supervisor of Education, to join us, myself, Ms. Ralda, Dr. Lehman, all of the supervisors, in an opportunity to truly have a conversation about academics, the arts, electives, programs, and it was very exciting. And I am so excited, because when I came, Ellen, as an acting superintendent, one of my goals was to work collaboratively with Jamesburg. Those children, as soon as twenty-third comes, or actually for them, it's a little bit earlier, I think it was today, if I'm not mistaken, when was their last day?
Their last day was Friday.
Friday. They're Monroe Falcons, and this attitude has culminated into action. And I was very excited, and very excited to hear all the great things that were going on, and then the continuation of the conversations via email through Ms. Trust and through Ms. Gasko and, and so on and so forth, Dr. Rozell, to see that we are setting the Jamesburg children up for success by collaborating with their instructors, their educators, their administrative staff, so that when they come to us, they have the same equal opportunities they should have. So it was a very exciting day. So I just had, I just had a great month, I just had a great month, and it puts so many things into perspective that we are lucky. And that is how we should be, lucky, happy, and let's be kind. I've been saying that for the last couple of months about kindness. So on that note, I would like to just continue with my, with my superintendent's report. We did acknowledge some retirees, but they are here. The reason why they're here, even though they may have been acknowledged there, it has something to do with the paperwork, the way it works, so I want to make sure that I, I follow, I follow and make sure that I say the three members that are actually retiring, in addition to those that I had named. So we have, once again, as I stated, in the Performing Arts Center, we have Ms. Patricia Rain, who brings art and makes art alive at the high school, retiring. We have Ms. Marian Twardzo, Annette Knight, head custodian at Monroe Township High School. Very excited for both of those members, and one member who I actually do know, Ms. Francine Wildin, who's a special education parent in our schools. We wish them well, we wish them falcon flight on their newest endeavor, and we are very excited for them. And one last thing before I ask for approval of my recommendations, I was very excited to receive in the mail, and I did want to acknowledge this at a board meeting, that one of our very own, one of our very own staff members at Applegoth, our media specialist, Mrs. Anastasia Hanekin, has been named the 2023 Vili Gandhi Leadership Training Scholar. And I'm definitely not going to read this to you, but just to give you an idea, the Leadership Training Scholarship is awarded annually and jointly by the NJASL, so I want to, I know that some people ask what that means, so that's the New Jersey Association of school librarians, for those for our anachronisms, I, I got to an answer, in honor and memory of our past president's school library media specialist, Vili Gandhi. She's, she is remembered, and therefore the acknowledgement is bestowed on the person each year, for extraordinary leadership and contributions to that committee and that organization. The winner of this prestigious award is chosen for the emerging leader qualities as a school library media specialist and supporter of technology in the schools. So I was beyond overwhelmed when I got that, I did share that with Ms. Graziano, who is the principal, and it's a wonderful acknowledgement, and I wanted to make sure to say aloud that we appreciate all of our school librarians, and I wanted to say thank you. Fantastic, yes. And now, for a ten-member vote, it is recommended that the board approve the attached personnel items A through BH.
You got a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second, are there any questions for Mrs. Chanley? All right, seeing none, Ms. Allen, maybe we have a roll call?
Yes.
Ms. DePaine?
We had, now, just so you know, we had, I'm going to double check, we had a tremendous amount of changes, because it was so, so much later than the last board meeting, so let me just confirm that for you. I go by my book, which is the most recent, there was one change that was added, we had to move something from a ten-member vote to a nine-member vote, and I don't know if you checked your email after that.
No, I just, I, this is the agenda I took from the table.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's in the news.
BI.
There is no BI on this.
BH.
BI.
Okay, so want to just confirm?
No, I got it from the air.
Oh, BI.
Yeah.
One of the ten-member votes to a nine-member vote.
If you allow me just one moment, I'm going to confirm, one was listed under a ten-member vote, and it had to be moved to a nine-member vote, so let me just check that for one moment.
That wasn't a personnel-
It was a team leader. But that may have been under board action just one moment.
Yeah, that was board action, that affected all the others there. This should be BI.
Okay.
Better to check the error, make sure I'm correct. Thank you, by the way. Okay. I'm going to go with the newly one. This is the one that was given to me four o'clock. But I will then change, and I'll be happy to repeat that. So it is recommended that the board approve the attached personnel items A through BI.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. Ms. Allen, may we have a roll call?
Yes. Ms. DePain?
Yes, but no on AS and AT.
AS and AT?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes, no to AS and AT.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes, no to AS and AT.
Ms. Scott?
Yes, to all.
Ms. Belko?
Yes, no on AU.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, recuse on letter AN for David Ratner and recuse on letter AU. I don't know if I have to recuse on letter AN for Mr. Snyder pending this, if that makes sense. I'll recuse just in case, nothing against him, for letter AN for Mr. Snyder. And then no on letters AS and AT.
So you recuse on AN and AU?
I recuse on letter. Recuse on letter AN for Mr. Ratner and Mr. Snyder. And recuse on letter U for the supervisor position.
Ms. Bora?
Yes, to all.
Ms. Skirby?
Yes.
Ms. Biermann?
Yes, to all.
So motion passes.
Thank you.
For the public viewing here, the motion passes.
I hope my alphabet is correct. And we move on. It is recommended the board approve the attached personnel items BJ through DK under a nine-member vote, with the exception of DF.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Are there any questions? Ms. Allen, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. DePain?
Oh, yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, recuse on letters CN and CO and DE for Mr. Ratner, as well as Mr. Snyder. Congratulations.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Skirby?
Yes.
Ms. Biermann?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Letter DF. It is recommended by the Assistant Superintendent of Schools that the board reapprove the following certificated staff for the 2023-2024 school year. Letter DF.
Second. Okay, are there any questions? All right, Ms. Allen, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Skirby?
Yes.
Ms. Biermann?
Yes.
Motion passes.
For board action under a 10-member vote, it is recommended the board approve the attached board action items A through V.
Motion. Second. All right, Ms. Belko with a motion, Ms. Ratner with a second. Are there any questions?
I have a question.
Okay, Ms. Alvarez?
On item S, the District Professional Development Plan, those professional developments are done during the school year, correct? When you have your half-days, your in-service days. All right, so then we are also asked to approve additional professional development. Do we have a budget cap for that or a limit on how much we spend yearly on the additional professional developments?
Yes, so that's all run through my office. Some of the professional development we budget for actually comes out of PPS. Some of the professional development, it's related to credit hours for some certificated staff. But everything else is in my budget line items. So we do manage those, monitor those, prioritize based on our school goals, our district goals, and things like that. And the district day-to-day professional development is also embedded in our budget. The train of trainers, the staff that gets trained to teach these courses, things like that.
And one more question. Item I. This workshop, I don't remember hearing about it in a meeting, is, who is attending it?
It's a requirement that we do every year. So part of our summer administrative workshop is that we have NJ, PSA, FEA, legal counsel come in every single year and talk about school law. It could include everything from harassment, intimidation, bullying, any other laws that have come to be. We do it every single year. It's something that's been done forever.
So it's for administrative?
Correct. Yes, the training is a requirement. We actually have to make sure that we get it done. And we utilize our time during the summer administrative workshop.
So the administrators have an hourly requirement in legal training each year. It's more fiscally prudent to have someone come in for the workshop time than it is to send our administrative team out in one-off workshops. So, but that's why we started doing it this way.
Yeah, I have a question on that workshop. Could board members attend that? As it just was, because it's on administrative law. It's something that, you know, we'd like to maybe have a refresher or just let, you know, participate in.
It's part of the NJPSA, right? No, we're not.
Board members can't participate in anything like that?
No.
Okay. Just wanted to check. It sounded interesting.
Yes, I had just a couple of quick questions. For letter A, there is one professional development that's a webinar that's about $6,000. It does say it's partially grant-funded. I was just curious, how much of that is grant-funded versus coming out of our budget?
So we can pay for the workshop itself out of the grant funding? And then the time, so the staff members' time over the summer is, comes out of our budgeted amount for professional development?
Okay, thank you. And then?
It's a function of what the grant is allowed to pay for.
Right, okay, I appreciate that. And then my other question is regarding letter U, which is the emergency plan. I noticed on the last page, it mentioned something about the meals. And that will provide, obviously, we provide mandated free and reduced students with their meals. But it also mentions that we'll be providing meals and transportation for students who are not under that. I know for COVID, that was something that was covered under federal programs. But then that stopped. Now students pay for lunch. Should we not get money for that? Is that coming out of our budget then?
We have it as a contingency plan. If it's something that, if a situation came up like COVID again and that opportunity exists, that's why it's in the plan, that we would fulfill that. If it's not, like if it happened today and we don't have the funding, we would have a discussion whether we want to prioritize that, but it's not.
So it's not mandated? Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
One comment on that. We may see that cycle through again probably in August. Because this is a federal piece that, the reason we're doing the approval now. The state released a checklist for us in July last year. We had to verify that that plan met certain things and get that a board approved. So again, you may see the exact same plan for the state purposes in August.
Okay, Ms. Allen, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Ratner?
Yes, recuse on professional development, letter A for Ms. Chanley and Mr. Snyder.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Skirby?
Yes.
Ms. Biermann?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under board action for a nine-member vote, it is recommended the board approve the attached board action items W through AE.
Motion. Second. Are there any questions?
No.
Ms. Allen, may we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes, no to AA.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Skirby?
Yes.
Ms. Biermann?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That concludes the Superintendent's Report. And once again, a very nice evening. It was really wonderful to celebrate our children. Thank you. And happy graduation to everybody and happy summer very soon.
The next item on the agenda is our Business Administrators' Report and Recommendations. Ms. Allen?
It is recommended the board action items A through AM be approved by consent roll call for a 10-member vote.
Motion. Second.
Are there any questions for Ms. Allen? Ms. Bora?
I do not have questions. I have a comment on the very important resolution that we're all voting on today. And I do appreciate all taxpayers that were aware of it and came out. I do want to say that this has been a question staring us in the face for the last over three months. And I can speak, I feel confident that I can speak for all of the board members, that each one of us has been doing our due diligence, researching, finding information, trying to do what is right for the taxpayers. But my duty, as I sit on this chair, is to student success. And so I wanted to just make a few comments on that resolution to explain the way I'm going to be voting. And I appreciate Ms. Sharma's question on the public forum where it was very, it was clearly articulated, what can we do in November? So I've had a few conversations with Ms. Allen and she's been very patient to walk me through it. And then there was a lot of reading done on the state statutes and the NJSPAs sites and lengthy discussions with several of the board members. If we had put anything in this year's budget that we approved back in April that fell outside of the cap and the funds that we had, we would have put that aside of the separate proposal and that could have gone out to question in November. That is the only budget question we can put out there. Or if we had another small referendum question, we could have put that out in November. Unfortunately, we do not have anything that we can put on the November ballot this year. We can go ahead and have regular vote elections. If we do that, come April 2024, when we sit down to do our budget again, we will be limited by the 2% cap. And yes, Ms. DePain shared a few things and Ms. Ratner and I have also talked about a few other opportunities. I have to say that a lot of those checkboxes have already been checked by not just Ms. Allen, but Mr. Gorski in the past. So we have been using bank cap. We have been using our surplus. This year, we used all that was available. And we're out of bank cap. We're out of surplus. So next year, we won't even have that room that we had this year when we sit down to do the budget. And so we will be literally limited by the 2% cap. And we are already seeing, the way it stands today, we are already seeing a shortfall to be able to balance the budget in April 2024. What that means to me as a board member is that if we don't take this out to the public, I have to make the decision, I have to vote yes on the proposed cuts to staffing, to programs, to courtesy busing, to sports and extracurricular programs. I honestly feel, as a representative of all taxpayers of Monroe, specifically the parents of children in the school district, I would rather give them the chance to vote on it instead of making that decision here myself, a few school districts, Robbinsville is a first example I can think, did what I'm saying could be the scenario. If we do not take this out to vote in April, Robbinsville this year, because of a shortage in the regular state funding and being limited by the cap, cut busing, laid off their staff members, cut freshman sports, a lot of cuts. The taxpayers wanted to fire the board members. But the board members just had that money to work with, which we get. We cannot increase anything on our own here from a money perspective. We can get state aid by, you know, by however hard we try, we can get more state aid. Our income is limited and our revenue is limited by the 2% cap. So the reason this needs to be voted on is because it's only fair that people whose children are going to school here have a say before I say yes or no to any cuts. If that vote failed in April, if the public says no and it goes to the town council, like Ms. Skirby said, we're one community. Whether your taxpayers fund the school budget or your taxpayer dollars fund a community project, it's all one community. And maybe at that time, as was explained to me, collaboration will come in place and we will cut less than what we would really have to cut in April if we don't go out to vote now. If we go ahead with November elections this year, we cannot bring this back out till April of 2025, not April of 2024. And there's been a whole hoo-ha about, this is a power play, people want to extend their term. This term will be extended. This term will be extended by four or five months for nine board members. And I can assure you, some of us are not happy about it. 10, sorry. I'm so sorry. I didn't mean to ignore you. But 10 board members will serve an extra term of five months, four months. And some of us are not happy about it. But it's the cost of service for our students. And we have to, we have to bite the bullet here, is literally what I would say, because it's not a joy right here. I'm sorry. It's tough decisions that we're taking. So with that, thank you for the opportunity to make the comments. I just wanted to put a little bit more literally for the public, because I've asked a lot of questions everywhere. And this is my understanding of why I am doing what I'm doing tonight. Thank you.
This is, what you're seeing here is a direct result of being ignored by Trenton. We are being ignored by Trenton. We've asked our representative to come here numerous amounts of times for years, for years. I've been on the board for three years prior to this. And I know for a fact that years prior to that, they've been asked to come here. We've asked the mayor to come here. We've asked Linda Greenstein to come here, Brad Benson, all of them. Nobody shows up. We're ignored. So now we want to take this, put it in the hands of our township council, have them tell the people of this town, I'm sorry, but we have to close down some programs because we can't afford this school anymore. Because we get $9 million and other districts get $35 million, $80 million, $1.3 billion, and we get $9 million. So our children are going to suffer as a direct result of our elected representatives ignoring this district and not giving it the proper funding it needs. And yes, there are some negative results for moving the election. But we must really ask ourselves, why did the previous mayor, God rest his soul, ask our old board mayor, our old board president to move the election in the first place? In my opinion, it was to take the onus off of him to close down programs in these schools. And board after board after board has tried to kick the can down the road and try to get us to survive, keep our neck above water, hoping that more funding would come in. And some has, but nothing near what this district needs. And I wish that people who came here with this fight to not move the election and to destroy some people's lives on this board, would come with the same energy and get on a bus to Trenton and fight the people who are harming your children, this district, the teachers, and everybody who deserves better here. We send out 50-some-odd million dollars, we get back nine. It's ridiculous. And I wish people would fight more for us. That's that.
Anyone else?
I have a question.
Sure.
I think one of the members of the public asked about the three years and it said it's not required. So why are we putting it in there for three years to spend $300,000 when we can only put, we can put one year only?
We're not putting three years.
Yes, you're, there's three years to extending the April 2024, 2020.
So that's explaining what happens to the 10 board members.
Three-year term. Our terms.
So we're not having three elections in April?
Well, this, I'm sorry. This will ride in perpetuity until someone makes a resolution to end it and move it back to November.
So that's my question. Why do we have to make a resolution? So that's my question. Why do we have to make a resolution to end it rather than just make it once?
We're making a shift to change it to April. It'll be, it'll stay in April, year after year after year after year, if nobody comes forward with a recommendation to change it.
But right now, we're making a recommendation, right?
To change it to April.
Why not just for once?
It's for moving forward until someone wants to rally to change it back.
Mr. Gagliardi, would you like to comment?
The short answer to the question is because you can't do it that way. You don't change it for a year. You change it. And then there's a point in time where you can consider whether or not to change it back.
And that point in time is a three years later?
No.
It could be in April of 2025.
Yeah, so your resolution is set up that way because it affects the terms of everybody here. I'm unaware of any occasion where any school board tried to do it in one year. But regardless of that, you cannot pass a resolution that simply changes it for one year. You're changing it, and there's a point in time where you can consider changing it back.
Does anyone have any other questions? Ms. Fabiano?
So I just have a couple of comments on that resolution. And Mr. Tofano, you referred to it as kicking it, kicking the can down the road. And I understand that, and I'm an educator, and the last thing that I want to see are cuts to any of our programs, but I also don't feel that it's the fiduciary responsibility of our council. We were elected into these seats as Board of Education members, and I feel like it's our job to make those decisions. I just, I don't, I don't agree that we're going to, we're not willing to make the tough decisions that we were elected for. I feel like it's our job to do that.
We don't have a choice to, we don't, we can't, we can't vote off 10 members.
No, no.
Of 10 members can't vote to go off 2% cap. And if we can't make that decision, then we have to make the decision of what to cut, who to cut, what programs to cut.
Right.
As Solis said, I really don't want to cut anything, but where am I going to get the money from?
Right, exactly. I don't want to cut anything either, but unfortunately, that's the position that we're in.
No, it's not.
To vote--
Well, it is until we pass the resolution.
We have to put somebody who can change that 2%, which is the township council. We can't do that.
Yeah, but it's also not their responsibility to make that decision. But it's not. We're responsible for our budget.
The rest of the state--
But you voted for a 4% increase on labor, which is 70% of your costs.
Well, so here, that's the other comment that I have is, and I, Ms. Alvarez, also, we were not aware, when this contract was put forth, that we could not afford it, that we would have to go over.
We can afford it.
But we can if we're going over, if we want to go over the 2% cap. And where we, in the state that we're in right now, we cannot.
The plan, the affordability plan, is to cut down to the dollars that we have access to, which might be 40, 50, 60 positions, or to look for relief to the cap and be able to expand, to cover, to maintain and sustain what we have. We're probably not on a path for growth for the next couple of years. The writing's on the wall for that. But now it's a struggle. Can we sustain? Our only path to sustain is to get relief on the cap. The only way to get relief on the cap today is through putting the budget out for a public vote and looking for relief there. Maybe we're going to get solace from new legislation that alleviates the cap. Maybe next year, maybe the year after, maybe never, who knows? But as more and more districts come to this position, and it's coming, it's not just us, we're just an early arrival, I think, at this train station because of the situation with state aid. But it's going to start coming. You'll see it. We saw it in Westfield. We're going to start seeing it in more and more towns like us as opposed to the 13 towns that were historically stuck with this.
And if I can make a comment, what happened in Robbinsville was that the board didn't do what we are proposing to do.
Correct.
They did. Then, after all the cuts, the public riled up and went to state, and they got money. They got audience from Senator Greenstein, and Senator Greenstein offered them money. So unfortunately, that's not happening with us, but it, it's not like we're failing in our jo-- we're not failing to do our jobs at board members by asking the taxpayers to vote on the budget. We are allowing for one more opportunity before we finally say, all right, we have to make the cuts. It's eventually going to come to us, as like Ms. Allen and Mrs. Chanley and Mrs. Kirby explained, the town council will give us a number. Work in this. We come back, with that number, we, the administration will then say, all right, this is our limit. Now we've got to cut this. We will make that decision, sorry.
Yes, Ms. Belko?
I just want to make it clear that we don't make the cuts. The cuts are recommended by the administration as to what needs to happen and where that needs to come from. And our administration is already being very forward-thinking and saying, I'm already planning for next year's budget, which is how budget cycles work, and, you know, we're already planning for 2024, 2025 budget because we have to, because we're looking down the road. The contract, the agreement, you know, it does increase it to 2% every year, so that's the cap. We can only do the salaries, and we will have to, programs will be cut, positions may be cut. We may have to, we may have to not fund sports. You know, honestly, was in that program tonight, and every sport that went by, I kept going in my head, cha-ching, 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 because--
$500 per student, per sport.
And those, yes, exactly. And we just received that, you know, that document this week. Looking at all that, we spend a lot of money on sports. We may have to say to the parents, you're going to have to pony up if you want your kids in sports. That's the reality of where we're at, and I think what we're trying to do here is being forward-thinking and moving to a place where we can go above the cap. And I don't think anybody at this table, including administration, is thinking we're going to go to 10% over what we currently have. We're, you know, we are here because we want to be fiscally responsible, and unfortunately, we came out of COVID. We skated through COVID because of COVID money. COVID money is now gone, and our bank cap was used to pay for a lot of things that we just really, we weren't prudent with the bank cap. And we came in to bank cap being lower than it had been in a very long time. And, you know, as Pete said, we kicked the can down the road, and we have some serious issues here that we need to take care of. And, you know, we're paying for trailers over at the middle school. That's 100, over $100,000 for the year, right? If I, if I, memory serves me correctly, it's very, and yes, you're right, we have a responsibility. But it's those folks who are going to have to tell us what they're going to want to cut and what we're going to do. We can say yes or no, like we've done here tonight on certain things. We said yes, we said no. I encourage you all to seriously think about this and to seriously think what this is going to mean for us. And not be penny-wise and pound foolish about spending $100,000 on election when we're talking about millions of dollars that we are going to gain by going up another percent, maybe going to 3% or 3.5%, which I don't think is unreasonable because it's there. I get that, you know, off-cycle elections are not very well-attended. I don't know how much more we could do to communicate. You're the communications chair. I don't know how much more we can do other than maybe skywriting, you know, flags like they do with the beach over the, over all of the homes here in Monroe, dropping little, like, you know, I don't know, didn't they used to, you know, during the war, they would drop little bombs? I'm serious. Like, I don't know how much else we can communicate to the public. I get emails from, I get emails from the district. I get emails from the township. Social media is just blowing up with, you know, with stuff. And because we've got our social media Facebook page really going out there, we're putting everything out there. It's there. People just aren't looking for it, which means they're apathetic about the whole thing. And the people that care are the four people in that second row, the three and four people in the back row, our poor tech guys who are here till whatever hour tonight, God bless yous all, and they're here. And our police officer, don't want to forget him, back there. But that's who's here. We have to make the tough decisions, and I think this is a tough decision, but I encourage you all to vote yes for this to be moved. And I would like the chair to recognize, maybe we give people one chance to talk on the topic, because we're beating this to death.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes. So first of all, I want to say I don't think anyone up here is doing this in order to extend their term. I would, I really, I want, I just, I want to make that clear, because, you know, I know it's out there. I know it was either Ms. Kirby or Ms. Bierman who brought up the point, that doing this will make our legislators look at what's going on. But one thing that I wanted to mention was that recently in Freehold Regional, which admittedly is like another excellent district close to us, they had their funding cut. They were going to cut in their budget courtesy busing. And, but then, the parents complained. They wrote to the legislators. Then there was legislation providing the funding in order to do that. But that was a decision that was made not by going to a budget cap decision, you know, to the voters, but something where they looked at and said, this is not something required for thorough and efficient education. And then, because parents were vocal, they were able to get that funding. Now, is that something we would get? I don't know. It was from Vingo Powell, who's a Democratic senator nearby, but that's a different story. And I know many of us have been very vocal about the funding formula. But here, here's my question. All right, so I'm going to try to make this as brief as possible out of respect for Ms. Belko's request. In 2022, in November, there were four districts that had cap vote, cap waiver or increment budget votes. That was in a November election. It was Delanco, Matuchin, Ocean Township, Montgomery. Ocean Township, they sought authorization to increase their tax levy in November for the purposes of maintaining the employment of eight teachers because their funding was expiring. And they said, since their, you know, in the last several years, they had a loss of state funding of $4.7 million. If the town approved this question, then that would allow for them to continue their class sizes as is. So I guess that's one of my thoughts where I'm confused, is if these districts were able to put that type of question on a November ballot, while I understand for this November, it might be too late, which I'll ask something about in a second. But isn't that something, then, that we can try before spending the money to do the election for the future year, knowing that we can do this if we plan ahead? Like, if we had looked at this in February, March, then we could have put this on our November ballot. Is that correct?
Well, it depends on what, again, there are restrictions on what we can put on there.
But that is--
If it was something allowable to put on, it would be, you could put it on for the November election.
Right, which is anything that's not required for thorough and efficient education.
And there are other--
And I'm sure there's certain exceptions. But essentially, it can be done if you plan ahead. So to say that you can't do it--
It would have to be a specific item that you're voting on. And what the administration was saying was as they are, as they are going through the budget process, they're going to need to make cuts in certain areas. It's not one item that you're looking for money for. It's the overall budget that you can't keep under the cap.
But my, my point is saying to the voters that it cannot be done in November is incorrect.
It cannot be done. You cannot go, Mr. Gagliardi, would you like to weigh in on this?
No, but I will anyway. Because I, this is super complicated stuff, and I'm going to take one shot at trying to clarify this debate about what you can and can't do. Because it, because the, I have not heard an answer that, based on my experience, I think is complete. So the significant difference, using the example you have. So let's say the question that went out in November was to have eight additional teachers, okay? Just an example. The difference between having a budget that you put out for a vote in April, where you bake into that budget eight additional teachers, and a special question in November where you ask the taxpayers to fund eight additional teachers, is this. If your budget is voted down in April, and it goes to the town council, the town council doesn't have to cut anything. And if the town council wants to cut more than you, as a Board of Education, think you're willing to cut, the overwhelming majority of times, those disputes do not wind up in a confrontation. They are mediated by the executive county superintendent because that's part of their statutory responsibilities. And so you may have enough money for six of the eight additional teachers you want. You may get all eight. You may have none of them. But there's an enormous amount of flexibility. Believe it or not, the town, this never happens, but I want to point out how flexible it is, the town could actually authorize the board to spend more money than the public voted down, taking the position, the public voted this down because you weren't spending enough on education. So it is absolutely freewheeling between what happens between the town and the board. Typically, there's some type of cut, either negotiated between the two bodies or mediated by the county superintendent. Now, taking that into November, here's the difference. If you have that special question in November, and it is voted down, no matter how much money you have in the budget, you cannot hire those eight additional teachers. That issue is dead, and you have absolutely no flexibility. So when you hear this discussion about what you can and can't do in November, respectfully, Madam President, I think the discussion has been incomplete because there is an enormous amount of flexibility that remains if something is not approved because the budget is voted down in April. There is absolutely no flexibility if a special question is voted down as part of an effort to get additional money when you put this out to the public in November. Thank you, Madam President.
I'd like to call the question.
I just had, I had a question about--
I called the question. Point is no more debate.
I'm not talking about that one, though.
Okay.
But I have a question on another letter. That's not the resolution.
What is, do you have a quick question? You've already, you've already asked questions during this. We're in the middle of a motion. What is the question?
Is that in standard language, or is this something new, specific to an incident that, you know, I was--
No.
You couldn't clarify?
It's standard. We do this every year.
Every year we do that?
Yep.
Ms. Allen, maybe--
Point of order, Mr. Gagliardi, can you please explain if we would like to have a vote on continuing the conversation, how that's done? I know this has been brought up before.
Right, so there's been a request made, there's been a request made to call the question, which is essentially a motion to end debate. So a yes now would end debate. A no now would be that you want to continue the discussion.
So we can take a vote on calling the question?
Yes. Well, you can, the president can end debate anytime, but there's a call the question motion made, so that's a vote, voted up or voted down?
Okay. Ms. Allen, can we have a roll call on--
To vote it, to vote yes for discussion? Who wrote yes?
Yes would end discussion.
Oh, yes ends discussion. Yes ends discussion.
No is continue the discussion. Right, so the motion was made by Ms. Belko to call the question, meaning end debate and have a vote. So this is not a vote on the agenda. This is a vote as to whether or not you're going to continue debate. Yes now means debate ends. No now means debate continues.
Ms. DePaine?
No.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
No.
Ms. Bora?
No.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
No.
Ms. Ratner?
No.
Ms. Alvarez?
No.
Ms. Kirby?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Motion does not pass. It's a no.
So for the discussion--
There were six noes, correct? Yeah, discussion continues.
Discussion continues. There were six noes. Right.
So discussion continues.
Or I can, or I can end the vote myself?
The president controls the agenda.
Ms. Kirby, with respect, I would like to request just to ask two additional questions.
Ms. Ratner, you're out of order. Thank you. Mr. Payne, do you have--
I just had a real quick question. What I had brought up in the beginning, what the superintendent had told me, I don't know if Ms. Allen can, no, the superintendent that I called, not you, don't worry about it. I'm not putting you on the spot. Ms. Allen, maybe you could. Was there additional, additional waivers for special ed enrollment growth and healthcare costs that were done?
We have had, we had no additional waivers this year available.
Well, we had none available that you could, that you could actually use to cut the budget, you're saying?
You would have to have them available. We could not use, there were nothing, there was nothing we could use to, as a waiver.
There was no money to use as a waiver?
Correct.
Okay. And the other question, he said, you could also save money by using food services as an enterprise account.
We already do that.
They are, you're going to, you said?
We already do it. We've been doing that.
I'm a new member. I don't know what you're--
And the waivers we haven't, typically, we don't get normally.
Okay. And then the 15% of your utilities for your budget, you do that too? Okay, I just wanted to make sure that what he mentioned, everything was, was, you know, up and up. So thank you.
Mr. Tofano?
I'd like to ask Mr. Payne a question. That superintendent that sent you that information, do you know how much money he gets from the state?
No, I don't. He was my son's teacher at Seton Hall.
Okay, well, why don't you text him back and ask him how much money his district gets? Because I'm sure he gets in the double districts and we don't. So our situation is way different than his. I'm sure of it.
I'm, I'm sure, maybe, maybe not. I didn't ask him that question. I'm, I'm sure, maybe, maybe not. I didn't ask him that question.
I, I know, but you're reading us something that a superintendent from a district who's, it's probably a wealthy district.
He's not a district superintendent. He's a retired superintendent that teaches up at Seton Hall.
Whatever advice he's giving you may not be relatable to our district's needs.
No, that's why I asked the double question again.
Right, right.
I wanted to just assure myself that everything was being done. That's why I didn't, you know, I just-
No, I, I, I'm glad that you did that. I'm just saying that-
Yeah, I just wanted to make myself sure that we do. That was it.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that has not spoken that has a question for Ms. Allen on her recommendations? No, all right.
Point of order, I would like to move, given the fact I was not able to ask my two remaining questions, that the motion be postponed indefinitely. I'm willing to rescind that if I'm allowed to ask my two questions.
Was this blackmail?
Well, I, I mean that-
She just asked you if anybody had any questions.
I asked before, and she said I was out of order.
You were out of order. You can't just start speaking, Kate.
I was in the middle of my questions when it was-
No, you weren't.
When there was the call to close the discussion.
All right, well, just ask the questions.
Thank you. Well, discretion of the chair.
Go ahead, Kate, ask your questions.
Okay. Thank you. My-
You got to the point. What are your conclusions?
I'll do that, but I would like to just ask my questions. So my first question is that the Director of Governmental Relations, as well as one of the NJSPAs attorneys, said in order to make this adjustment to the cap, first we have to prove to the county superintendent that we have removed things that are not required for thorough and efficient education. And, well, we haven't, though. That's the thing, and we don't want to. But what they said is that the county superintendent can look at that, state that we have not done our due diligence, and then we are not allowed to ask for that increase based on what the county superintendent says. And so I wanted to confirm that information because I got it from, from that.
Laura wants to say it. I can see Laura saying it.
Right.
Just because they can, just because, I'm going to say, just because they can doesn't mean they will.
Right. They may approve it, but they may not. So my point is by making this, it doesn't mean we can put this out to the voters anyway. That's all I'm saying.
It does.
It says that we have to approve that reductions that are not items required for thorough and efficient pension have been made at the local government. If the super, county superintendent does not believe that has been done, then he can deny our request for a cap increase. He can approve it, but he can deny it.
He can, but that's on this too.
I'm just, I'm just asking if that's correct. There is the chance that if we do this, we could not even have the chance to go to above the cap based on the decision of the county superintendent.
The county superintendent, I, yeah, and so could, that could happen.
Thank you.
That we wouldn't go above cap, but we're not going to go below cap. We're not going to be any worse than we are now.
Right. But we would be spending the money to move it without having the option of doing that.
Hundred thousand dollars could be-
I'm just saying, there is the chance by spending a hundred thousand dollars to move it, we still might not be allowed based on that decision by that one individual. That's all I'm asking.
If it got that far, but it wouldn't even go to the county.
No, no, no. Before we can put some, it on the ballot, I was told that he has to look that we have made the cuts for thorough and efficient before asking the voters to approve it.
Mr. Gagliardi, can you please?
So the, the, the statement, it, it's just a truism, right? Everybody here knows that the county office has to sign off on your budget before it's submitted to the voters, whether it's in April or November. So that's a, that's a true statement.
Yes, that's true.
But I don't, I don't think it has anything to do with what the board is considering tonight.
No, but my, Mr. Gagliardi, my question is if he looks at that and we have not removed things, things that we want to keep, like courtesy busing comes up, he can say, before you can go above this 2% cap to the voters, you need to remove this from your budget. This is information I was given. But I'm, I'm clarifying with you as our board attorney.
Right. And my answer is the county superintendent could do that, whether you move the, the election in November or not. The county superintendent has to approve your budget.
Right. But he can do that either way. So it doesn't go out to the voters necessarily. That's all I'm saying.
It's regardless of we go out to vote or not, is what Mr. Gagliardi was saying.
Right. But right now, our election is, is, doesn't cost money. That's, I'm saying, it's, it's, it's more of a gamble because first we go to this person.
No, it's not.
My second question was regarding what was actually something that was brought up by multiple people on this board, that we don't want to cut these programs. Why would we not then put these programs? Because we want to give voters the right to choose whether or not these are continuing. Why would we not put these specific programs? As was mentioned, we have to put, right, certain things on-
That's not how this works. The administration, I'm sorry, Chrissy, but I can't anymore. The administration makes their recommendations. We either say yes, or we say no. We don't get to decide what programs are going to cut, what programs would do the most harm.
No, I, I agree.
Ms. Belko, aren't you out of order? Because we have a president sitting right there.
She's the chair, and I asked her if I could speak, and she said, go ahead. So-
Okay. But point of order, you're out of order.
Ms. Belko, I'm, I'm not-
Yeah, two simple questions, and you drag this out another fifteen minutes.
Ms. Belko, that's not what I'm stating. I'm stating that we would not be making a decision, and we're trying to ask the voters if, put it in their hands.
You don't send that kind of stuff out to the voters. So I find your question to be a little off-putting.
So things like courtesy busing, that's not something you put out.
No, that's not what the voters, they can come screaming at us at the podium like they've done for the last three years about everything we've done, and we have to sit here and we take it. Everybody gets their four minutes to tell us, we need courtesy, we need our courtesy buddy, we need this, we need that.
Happened already.
And, and they did it one time when they tried to cut busing over in the other side of town with Oak Tree. And they came, and the administration went back, found the money, and they made the adjustments because they listened to the voters. And that's what we do. But we have to be able to make the decisions, present things, allow our administration to do their job, and then make our decisions from there. And I just think this continual debate about this is, is, is fruitless because I don't see anyone changing their minds about what their vote is going to be here, regardless of any more discussion.
Thank you.
That's my opinion. I, I, I don't know what else to say.
Thank you. Ms. Allen, can we please have a roll call? Yes. Ms. Fabiano?
Yes to all, no to AL. Oh, and no to A38.
Yes to all.
Yes. Ms. Scott?
Yes to all.
Ms. Alvarez?
Okay. Um, yes, I have to abstate on A25, and I'm, a no on A30 and A38 and AL.
Yes to all.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes to all, no on A38, no on letter AL, recuse on Billis for David Ratner and Yael Snyder.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes to all, no on 38, and no on AL.
Ms. Kirby?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right. It's recommended that Board of Education, Board Action Items A N through A S be approved by consent roll call under a nine-member vote.
Motion, second.
Is there any questions?
One quick question. Sorry.
Ms. Alvarez?
The double cardio trailer, is that new, or we've always had that?
It's always had.
Yeah.
All right. Can we get a roll call, please? Ms. Belko?
Yes to all.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes to all.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Kirby?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Motion passes. What, ugh, lose my report. All right. The next item on the agenda is the Board President's report. I will keep this very short as it's getting late. I wanted to extend my congratulations again to everyone we've recognized tonight, from our staff to our students. They truly make this the best school district to be a part of. This has been an incredible school year. When I think back to September, it seems so far yet the year flew by. We, as a board, have a lot to be proud of this year. We came together, not only voted to approve the administrator's contract, but we successfully negotiated the teachers' union contract, both before their current contract ended. Our students achieved so much this year, and I want to thank each and every single person that works every day in our district to make our students successful. Thank you, and have a great summer. September is only 10 weeks away. To our graduating seniors and senior parents.
They have to remind us.
So our graduating seniors-
All in place in April.
So our graduating seniors and senior parents, congratulations, many wishes for success to every student in the class of 2023. May they always soar high like a falcon. That is the end of my report. The next item is other board business. Does anybody have other board business? Mr. DePaine?
I'll make it quick, I swear. I don't want to swear any, any bad swear word. I attended a New Jersey State Leadership School Board meeting on June 15th, met Mr. Barry Fitzgerald from Burlington, who's the new VP and the new County Activities Chair. Dr. Purnell, Timothy Purnell, who's the Executive Director of NJSPA, spoke about the hiring of a third coordinator for Central Jersey. Apparently, there's three sections in New Jersey, and there was not a coordinator for Central Jersey. So the two other people were overwhelmed. So he mentioned that the new program called Connections, which is, I went on today, which will enable all board, and Kate talked about it, enable all board members throughout the state to connect and share with other board members with regards to questions about what they're doing in their district. For example, how has mental health and safety been done in your district? So the meeting was to start discussions on what the New Jersey School Boards Association in each county would try to look at this year. Some of the topics brought forth were school safety and mental health, sustainable funding for mentoring, branding in the district, which New Brunswick has done a great job of that. They sell a lot of stuff. They give things away to the kids, and all brands of Monroe would be throughout the district. Restorative practices and how to create alternative methods, how to handle the public, ballot design in the way the school board candidates are listed on the ballot, the hiring process, athletics. And these are just things that people threw out through the meeting. How to bring in the community, social media, that was a big thing. SEC is now looking at board members' social media, so we should all be aware. Taking the voting out of your schools. Make, don't use your schools for any voting. That's something people are very concerned about. The teacher shortage. Find, here we go, Mr. Tofano. Find a speaker from the state legislators to speak about funding issues. Okay, there you go. It's down in the list. Advocacy, but, oh, they said to be an advocate with that person, but not to go and be nasty, but go in there with, like, alternative issues to them. Don't go, well, this is our issues, and this is our problems. What can you do? Give them alternatives and how they can help you. That's what they said. And anyone here can attend a legislative committee meeting, and they're usually Zoomed, they're virtual. Go through negotiation drills, how and what each county brings to new school board members, something they want each school, each district, each county to do. Work together for the HVAC program so that we can all take part of it and get discounts if we all work together on that. What are board members entitled to, such as viewing resumes of hires, personnel records upon request, and that was a long talk to, and looking into requests from board members. So that's what a lot of things were thrown out, whether people are going to, in the counties, take it and run with it. That's, and then I just have one more. I went to a workshop on June 9th. Thank you for sending, letting me go. School Security and Safety Conference, it was wonderful. The Edison Board Township Director of Safety and Security, Patrick Kisseny, I have his card. But the topics were, which I thought was interesting, mapping, to me, was really a one interesting topic. And that seemed to be all across. Mapping, as in map, M-A-P.
I thought you were taking a nap.
No, napping, I do at home after, after, my grandchildren go home. Uniform State Memorandum of Agreement, Improve School Security with Proactive Approaches, Redefining School Safety with SROs, Roadmap to Ransomware Resilience, Why Cyber Security is Everyone's Problem and What We Can Do, Lockdowns, Emergencies, Student Safety, Mandate CRG Mapping for New Jersey Schools. Supposedly, there's 80% of the schools in New Jersey, if you send the outline and the, I can't think of the word, of your, your schools.
Floor plan.
Thank you. It's late, and I could, if you send it to them, they will figure out a mapping way for security and edger over there, I don't know if we do that, for security and ambulances and every, in case there's any kind of issues around our school. So they'll be able to say, well, oh, you know, a button was pushed, and classroom A3's got the, the guy in there with the gun. So they know where to go instead of wasting time trying to find the room. And so that's another thing we can do.
Could I comment on that? Am I allowed?
Yeah, sure, sure.
Okay. No, but we do just-
That's nothing, that's nothing.
I just wanted to comment on that because we work hand in hand through our memorandum of agreement with the police department, and we have our, all of our schools are completely mapped out with numbers and so forth, and we, we work. So I, I, I'm not going to say any more because I don't want to say any more about security, but I want to let you know that.
I was curious, I was curious if we were part of the 80%, which we are. But I thought that was so interesting. And then implementing threat assessments in your school district. So I do have brochures I'll give to Mr. Selby, and it was really interesting, and I really enjoyed the day. So thank you.
Please, I would love to have a copy if you want to give that to me.
I was going to say, that should go to Chrissy to be able to distribute to the administrators, and they'll take care of it.
Copy of what?
What you've got.
The information you got.
Oh, you should not be delivering things directly to a staff member.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that. Okay. I will, you want all of it, all the pamphlets I took that day?
Sure.
To Mr. Selby?
If you wanted to go to the administration, to Mr. Selby, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
All right. Anybody else have a new board business? Ms. Fabiano?
Really quick, I do promise. I just wanted to congratulate all of our staff, students, and administration on the culmination of another successful school year. The work now starts again for the following school year, so I know it's not over. But, and also just wanted to wish a special congratulations to our graduating seniors of the class of 2023. We are so proud of you and hope that you know that you, as a falcon, will always have a nest here. So congratulations.
Oh, that's cute. Anyone else? Ms. Ratner?
Yes, I just wanted to piggyback on that. I also wanted to congratulate the board members who have students graduating, whether it's kindergarten, third grade, fifth grade, moving up, eighth grade, 12th grade. Congratulations. I know it's sentimental, so enjoy the next couple of days. Finally, I just wanted to acknowledge the Lynn family, who had a donation of a marimba that is being given to the Monroe Township Middle School, and I wanted to wish everyone a happy summer.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Skirby, real quick, I will keep it real quick. I just wanted to speak as a mom of a senior to say a heartfelt gratitude. My oldest is going to graduate on Friday, and I, as a mom, I'm not crying. I, as a mom, am feeling, my heart is overwhelmed with gratitude to the educators from this district, starting from Falcon's Nest to where he is today. I am not crying, Mr. Tofano. I will hold it back till Friday, but I am just taking this moment to say that no matter what challenges we face in this district, the product that comes out of this district, you're a falcon. I like what you just said. These, once a falcon, always a falcon, is the experiences. Like, I'm an army brat. I went to nine schools before I graduated high school. So to see my son come through this program and impact every educator, every para, every sub had on him, the coaches, I am immensely grateful as a parent, and I feel that no matter what the stakes, it's payback for what my children are benefiting from this program. Thank you.
Thank you.
She's lying. She's crying, I see.
Ms. Belko?
I just want to congratulate Karen. She's got a graduating senior, Gazala. Congratulations to both of you.
And me.
And me, and the B. Oh, Chrissy, oh my God. And he's got two of them. Oh, Lord. Okay.
It's late.
Forgive me, forgive me, it's late. But I just wanted to, you know, acknowledge, because you're all, because I've been telling them all to stop crying for the last three months. Because it just, and I was not that, like, you know, I know, cry from kindergarten all the way, I never shed a tear. Move on.
What do you mean, no? I want to know.
I love my children, but, you know. But no, I, I attended the TAP graduation, and I just wanted to not, not mention that. That was an incredible ceremony. My daughter will be going through that next year. I probably will cry. So just come take pictures because that will be, you know, she's been in this district since she's three years old. She'll be 21. Do the math. That's a long time. And if it wasn't for the amazing teachers like you talked about, she wouldn't be where she is. So thank you. And happy summer, but we'll
So thank you, and happy summer, but we'll be back here next month.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Can I, I just wanna ask a quick question. Can the people that have seniors graduate and give their children a diploma?
Yes.
Is that what you do here?
The, any board members that go hand out the diploma, yes.
Right, I know we do, but I mean, say if I have a B, so Gazala just comes up and just gives it to her son, okay. I don't want...
It's not very, it's not very organized.
I don't wanna prevent anybody from giving their diploma. I did to all my children, and it was so wonderful to hug them and give the diploma. I don't want anybody here to not have that feeling on...
We switch off.
Good, good. Oh, I don't know what I have, but I mean, if, just tap me on the shoulder and I'll let you...
Thank you, Gail. Anybody else? Okay, the next item on our agenda is the public forum. Any member of the public wishing to speak, come to the podium, state your name and municipality, and you have four minutes to address the board.
Linda Bezowski, Rossmore in Monroe Township. First of all, I'd like to thank Dr. Lehman and his professional staff who did an outstanding presentation for the League of Women Voters at the library this past, about a month ago, about our curriculum process in the district. It was a very wonderfully done presentation, and we thank you very much for that. Three quick questions. We, shall, am I correct in assuming that we will not have a November referendum question?
Correct.
Okay. Second of all, if we now have approved to have a vote on the budget in April, is that for the '24-'25 budget? Okay. And thirdly, when will we be seeing the survey results for the referendum failure?
Ms. Jemmy?
I mentioned this earlier. The survey results are done, everything is tabulated, wants to have a discussion, but respectfully, it's something that's gonna be coming through, the LANCE, and to no one's fault, with the smoke and so forth, it was canceled. So it's gonna be in July.
July, okay, because I checked before I came, just in case it got put up on the website.
Yeah, July 7, 6, 8, 12.
11.
Okay, that's all I have to say, thank you so much.
Sarah Aziz, I live in Monroe Township. At the last Finance Committee meeting, the committee chair admitted that the board just approved a three-year contract with the MTEA that it could not afford without cutting positions or raising taxes above the 2% cap. A major reason we can't afford this MTEA contract as is is because the board has spent the past year wasting our tax dollars. The board wasted over $100,000 on a suspension of the former business administrator who's paid a full salary while suspended. His suspension prompted the board to give huge pay raises to existing staff in the central office to perform some of his work. In the meantime, he was sitting at home, getting paid while not working. The board also wasted nearly $40,000 on a forensic investigation that failed to reveal that the suspended business administrator committed any financial crimes. The board wasted another $40,000 on a part-time Oprah secretary when it could have saved money by having our current business administrator serve as our Oprah officer. Our current business administrator is paid almost as much as her predecessor when she has a fraction of his responsibilities. This is not fiscally responsible. The contract with the Porzio Law Firm was on the agenda tonight, and we pay Porzio lawyers an hourly rate when we could save money by hiring a salaried in-house attorney. Our legal fees are over $100,000 more than what they were when our school district had a salaried in-house attorney. The unethical behavior of some board members has prompted lawsuits and multiple ethics complaints, which have already been referred to the Office of Administrative Law. Meanwhile, the board eliminated the valuable department coordinators' positions while also switching teachers to an inferior healthcare plan. Against the outcry of the community, the board drove out a very popular and highly qualified athletic supervisor, Sean Dowling. The board members who are up for reelection this year, Ms. Skirby, Ms. Bierman, and Ms. Belko, must sense that their actions are deeply unpopular. And they are now putting forth a resolution to extend their term by five months by moving the board elections to April 2024, which is also when they plan to hold a vote to increase school taxes beyond the 2% cap. This will cost taxpayers $100,000 per year. The board should stop wasting our money. And when you ask the taxpayers for more money to go beyond the 2% cap, they need to feel assured that the board is spending their money wisely. Our budget is tight, and the board cannot afford to waste any more money.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak?
Sheller Minio, Monroe. Already, I have heard comments in this room that those who objected to the resolution to move the vote to April and the proposal to increase the tax levy, that those citizens who were against that don't care about the children and are characterized as wanting to cut programs. And this is categorically untrue, and that goes for the board members who voted against it. That is categorically untrue, that they don't care and that they wanna cut programs. So I hope that our superintendent and those in the public who did not want to see any objection would be respectful of the free speech aspect of the rights of the citizens. And I'd like to remind you that even those people, including myself, who objected to this move, will still be paying our taxes. And I will be paying my taxes gratefully for the children of this town as I have done since 1980 because it is important to me and it is a community responsibility, and I take it as my civic duty. However, I also believe that people should not be characterized or flawed for what they believe and what information they're trying. I think there are other ways to have done this. I think that people with more than two children in this town are not even paying the cost of the education for their children. It's other people, and it's the community effort that is. For instance, if you had, and I'm not saying, I'm just saying, for example, if you have two children in this community, and even if you're paying $20,000 in taxes, and the per pupil cost is $14,000, you are not paying all of the cost for your children's education. It's everyone in this community, and they should be respected for their voice, for their vote, and for the taxes they pay regardless of things that they might object to. So I hope that this administration and the board will stay out of criticizing people who did that and stay off public media and respect the fact that we all have a voice in this democracy and that the students, we do want the students to come first, but maybe we have alternatives. I half agree with some of the things Mr. Tofano said. The problem is really Trenton, but the problem is also across the street. If you wanna complain, we need to have people start at the Planning Board, at the Township Council, and the Zoning Board because that, and I said it in 2000, maybe bring my speech, what I said in 2000, that that is where the decisions are made. 100% of the cost of our education for our children is being voted on and approved by the high density. And the fact that we have affordable housing obligations are because of the high density that occurred way before that. And it is my understanding, if you wanna really look into things, that we're already putting additional residential, over the 6,000 we're putting, that are gonna cost us in the future more affordable housing. So please respect the citizens who actually have a legitimate concern. Thank you.
Thank you, and I don't think anybody here on this board criticized anybody tonight. I think this board, I'm sorry, Ms. Arminio. Nobody here criticized anybody that came up to speak and had an opinion. Nobody criticized each other. As board members, we had a very respectful conversation and discussion prior to voting. Nobody criticized anybody. Is there anybody else wishing to speak? Great. We will close the public forum. The next agenda item is our closed session. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby goes into closed session in accordance with Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subjects: harassment, intimidation, and bullying; matters protected by attorney-client privilege; confidential personnel matters; superintendent's evaluation. Following closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have a motion? Motion.
Motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, prior to going in, we need to appoint a temporary board secretary. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We will be going into closed session. It may be a half hour to two hours. Okay, we're back in the public session. Our next item on the agenda is our public forum for closed session items only. Is there anybody willing, wanting to come and approach the board to speak? Seeing nobody, we will close the public forum. The next scheduled Board of Education meeting is on July 19th, 2023.